Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 10th Planning Board Meeting. We'll wait for the room to fill up, but while that's happening, if we could come to order, and please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
For which it stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. This is the Jersey City Planning Board Meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start. To adhere to social distancing protocols and best practices imposed by city and state authorities, City of Jersey City canceled in-person public meetings until further notice. As a result, this planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that is open to the public. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Hudson Reporter, L. Especialito, posted with the city clerk on August 5th, 2021. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and made available to the public on the data portal.
All right, thanks, Matt. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. All right, so I am seeing Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
What is what?
Yeah.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Allen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Horton.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Yeah.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
All right, for the record, we see we have seven commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Could we swear in the staff, please?
I see Matt, Tim, Mallory, Lindsay. Do you guys swear that the testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Matt, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do. We received correspondence regarding a couple matters to be carried. So at looking at the agenda, item number seven, case P 20-173, address 43-45 Charles Street, is carried to a date uncertain. They will have to renotice. They are tolling the time for board action. And I'll post this in the chat after I'm done running through them. Case number nine on the agenda, file number P 21-049, address 1 and 33 Parkview Avenue, is carried to a date certain of August 24th with preservation of notice. Scrolling further down into the agenda, number 20, case P 20-168, address 417-427 Hoboken Avenue, is carried to a date uncertain. And number 22 on the agenda, case P 21-013, address 241 MLK Drive, carried to a date certain of August 24th with preservation of notice.
All right, thanks, Matt. If you could, please put those items in the chat, and I'll try and remember to refer to those throughout the meeting. All right, having no old business, we'll go into new business then. We have item 10 on the agenda is case P 20-101. It's a preliminary and final major site plan with C. Varys. That's for 211 Fifth Street.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Joseph.
I see Sam. We have Helena as our architect as well. I do not see her.
Saw another hand go up there.
There we go. So while we're doing that, Stephen Joseph, the Trami Law Firm. Counsel, can we answer the notices into evidence, please?
So counsel, before we do that, I have to advise the board that I have a conflict on this matter. I represent a client that's within 200 feet of the proposed development, so I will have to step away from the application. Chairman, as always, it's the board's call whether or not, along with the applicant, the board is comfortable proceeding without counsel for the application. But before we get into that, Chairman, I believe that perhaps Commissioner Horton has been re-upped as a board member. Commissioner Horton, is that correct? Have you been reappointed to a new term?
That is correct.
And did you go down to the clerk and get sworn in and fill out the oath, or have you not done that?
I have not done that.
All right. Commissioner, I can administer the oath to you here this evening if you like, and you'll be able to vote on all the matters. So Chairman, I think it would be appropriate to do that at this time.
Please, if we could.
Okay. Horton, if you could raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm. You have to repeat after me. I.
I.
Commissioner Peter Horton.
Commissioner Peter Horton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the laws of the State of New Jersey.
To uphold the laws of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The municipal ordinances of the City of Jersey City.
Municipal ordinances of the City of Jersey City.
And all other duties as a planning board member.
And all other duties as a planning board member.
Of the City of Jersey City.
Of the City of Jersey City.
With the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Chairman, if we can just have the clerk get the certification to Mr. Horton so that he can get that signed and on file with the city. Congratulations, Mr. Horton.
Thank you.
Peter, congrats. Good to have you back.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Glad to have you back.
Glad to be back.
All right, so Mr. Joseph, the way we've handled this in the past with our attorney refusing himself, we're comfortable moving forward. If at any time we feel like we need to consult outside counsel, we'll try and reserve that right, if that's okay with you.
Yep, that's acceptable to the outcome.
Okay, thank you. So let's let's continue with your application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Santa.
Great. So let's let's just mark the notices into into evidence. We can do that. I believe it's A1.
We could just have one of the planners confirm, I guess, that it's
Yeah.
accurate. Thanks.
All right, so for the record, staff planner Lindsay Sigmund, we reviewed the affidavit of proof of service, the notice of hearing, the certified list of property owners, the certified mail receipts, and the affidavit of publication, and the Jersey Journal all appears to be in order. If we can mark that for the record, please.
Okay, and that's A1.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lindsay. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Joseph.
So this property is located mid-block between Grove Street and Erie Street. It's in a historic zone. We did have to appear before HPC. We appeared in May of 2021. We received approval from HPC for this project. What the applicant is proposing is the expansion of an existing three-story four-unit dwelling. The use and density is permitted. It's just a rear addition. We are requesting a variance for the building coverage where 60% is permitted and 68.43% is proposed. The the project is otherwise in compliance with the zoning ordinance. We do also need preliminary and final major site plan approval. That's a little odd for a project of this size, but when you're adding more than 50% of the existing square footage of the building, which we are here, it bumps it up to a major site plan rather than a minor. Let's let's get Helena sworn in, and we could start with the architectural testimony.
Hi, Helena. If you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Helena, H.E.L.E.N.A. R.U.M.A.N.
Thank you.
Ms. Rumman, good evening. We've called on you in the past. Your license is still current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you're qualified. Thank you.
This is the first page of the of the submitted drawings showing the front facade. The building was constructed around 1880 as part of three-story, four-story-high townhouse development on the street. More than 50% of the original townhouses still remain on this pretty block, although many of them were altered. Unfortunately, this building was altered in the past, not very successfully. The previous owners coated the original brick facade in the front with stucco brick coating imitation of a brick, altered the the front stoop, built massive walls on the perimeter of the front yard. As we presented to the Historic Commission, it is our intent to restore the building front facade, stoop, and front yard in in the standards for historic preservation. The brick coating will be removed and the original brick restored. This city block map indicates the extent of development of the adjacent properties. The red square is the proposed addition for the building at 211. The adjacent property, which was also the original row house, was extended in the past, leaving 30 feet deep rear yard, and that's what we are planning to do. Adjacent to the east is a four-story apartment building. Further to the east, toward the end of the historic district, which is shown here in in green, late 70s new developments. This is the proposed site plan, which shows the extent of the existing townhouse, which is about 40 feet, and we are proposing additional 27 feet of rear addition. The building has two steps down in the front yard to the entrance to the basement with a basement unit under the stoop, which we will maintain, and in practically we are extending the living space in the new addition. The property is narrower than the standard 25 feet lot. It was narrow in the past to 23.33 feet. We are planning extensive landscaping in the back in 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 order to meet the guard requirements, planting various New Jersey native species of of trees, shiraps, and other vegetation, which will be available, accessible to the residents. The existing building will be fully renovated. This floor plan on the left shows the extent of existing building with the layout, the shaded walls indicate the proposed addition. The first, the basement unit will be meeting ADA requirements as required by the code, and will be two-bedroom unit. For the first floor unit will be again two-bedroom unit with two bathrooms with access to the rear yard. And the third and fourth floor units will be three-bedroom units with two bathrooms. We are planning to access the roof from the fourth, from the third floor unit, and provide a new deck for the benefit of the third floor residence. This drawing shows the proposed restoration of the of the front facade. We will be removing the brick coating. This is example photograph of a sample we took on the of the into the facade last year, exposing the original brick. And that's what we plan to do. We will be restoring also fully the the front stoop, removing the the solid masonry wall in the front and replacing this wrought iron railings. This drawing shows the rear facade where we will have balconies for the residents and access from the basement apartment to the rear yard. This is a side elevation showing the the portion of the existing building above the adjacent structure with the shape of the new penthouse leading to the to this rooftop deck, which will not be visible from the street. A building section which shows the form of the existing building and colored extent of the proposed addition. It was our intent to provide quality living without imposing additional density on on the neighborhood. We are meeting the unit density requirements by the zoning ordinance. We are meeting the requirements for the rear yard setback, and we are not altering any front yard or side yard requirements. This concludes my presentation, and I'm open for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rumman. Just a couple of quick questions. The stucco material you're using, is that a smooth stucco?
In the rear, yes. We are not using any stucco in the front.
How about on the side? Same stucco on the side?
Yes.
Okay, and it's a smooth finish. The all the plans you're showing us tonight are the same plans that the historic preservation?
That's correct.
Okay, so they're aware of the window changes and everything like that?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Yeah, those are my only questions. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm Dr. Desai, and then I want to know who is able to access the rear yard? All three floors or only one floor?
Two units from the basement unit and from the first floor unit.
And how about the rooftop?
The rooftop is accessible, will be accessible, will be a part of the third floor unit.
All right, thank you, Doctor. Anybody else? Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
The door, the entrance under the stairwell, that's existing now, and is entering the basement unit, that's all existing?
That's existing. We are only replacing the door.
Okay. Under the stairwell, is that a garbage area or just an entrance to go? Is there a storage area under the stairwell or just a the existence to go into the unit?
There is a small common area with utility meter room and and trash collection.
Okay. So they would have exit out now. Is the 34th floor this sprinkler system in this system? Yes?
We will be adding a sprinkler system to the to the building.
Okay, that's all I got.
All right, thanks, Eddie. Anybody else? Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rumman.
All right, so let's let's get Sam sworn in for some brief planning testimony.
I say, Mr. My testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure. Samuel Bellamy, S.A.M.U.E.L.B.E.L.L.A.M.Y.
Thank you.
Bellamy, good evening. We've qualified you in the past. Your license is current?
Yes, current and in good standing.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thanks. So getting right into the the variance request that we're asking for tonight, this property is located in the Harrisimus Cove Historic District. We are asking just that one variance for maximum building coverage. We're proposing 68.43%, where a maximum of 60% is permitted. We are complying with all setback requirements and just getting a little bit into those setback standards. 30-foot rear yards required. That's what we're providing. We're maintaining the the 2.2 front yard setback, which matches the the front yard setbacks of the adjacent buildings. Really, that discrepancy between the maximum building coverage and the setback requirements is there's a maximum 10% front yard setback permitted. So if you did have a larger front yard setback, that's where you would you would be more in compliance with with that building coverage. With this design, with the addition that we are proposing to the rear, we're matching that adjacent building. So really, this this massing and building footprint is consistent with the rest of the block. We will maintain light and air into the interior of the block, and we're also are maintaining permitted block coverage where 72% is permitted and 80% is required. And we are meeting the the Jersey City's new green area ratio, the gar requirements, 0.25s required. We're providing the rear landscaping around the perimeter, the native species, lawn area, the planning area and street tree in the front. So that all adds those resiliency aspects that that meet these G.A.R. requirements. In addition, we are proposing the extensive restoring the the facade of the building, the the front facade, the stoop, and also the front yard area as Ms. Rumman had testified to, really bringing it back to its historic nature and maintaining that historic quality for this historic district. So with that, I do think that there will not be any substantial detriment to the general welfare. As stated, we are providing sufficient light and air. We're maintaining a scale that's consistent with the block and adjacent development, and we're meeting that lock coverage and G.A.R. addressing any stormwater concerns. Likewise, there won't be any substantial detriment to the zone plan or zone ordinance. We are meeting the ten and purpose of the of the historic district by maintaining the historic and improving the historic facade of the building, and that's also consistent with the master plan, maintaining historic buildings and historic districts. And and going into the the purpose of the municipal land use law, this this is a permitted use of four-unit permitted density. So we are promoting purposes A and purpose E. It's an appropriate use and development of the property and also consistent density. And then all those facade improvements, adding the street tree, new sidewalks, that will really improve the streetscape. I believe we're covering up the wires that's in front of the building, so that all improves the streetscape consistent with purpose I. And I think that really covers my my testimony for this. This is a this, the the criteria really that we meet is to C2 criteria, where in the benefits of the project, what substantially outweigh any detriment with all these improvements that we are making to the building. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Sam. Helena, if you if you want to stop sharing your screen, that that would and that would conclude our direct testimony.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Yeah, I have no questions for Mr. Bellamy unless counsel, I do want to address the easement. And you want to handle or is Mr.?
Yeah. So Helena actually has a really good understanding of the history, but I'll give a give a brief overview here. There there's an easement on the property. The property lines, if you're looking at the building to the left, get blurred because the party wall was taken down. It was complicated, contentious history involving litigation with with various owners over there. And the the start of the building and the end of the building gets gets a little muddled from where the property line is. Helena could go into some some more detail. I think it's
I will simplify it. The build, the the stone house was built as a standard townhouse for the full width of 25 feet lot with masonry walls on the east and west up to the property lines. About 40 years later, the apartment, the four-story apartment building to the east was constructed, and they took the this townhouse easternly wall as a party wall, although it was very clearly visited the property with, and they built on top of this neighboring townhouse wall. They built in front of that of that facade, practically going into the neighboring property. Sometimes about 60 years ago, what we found in searching the history, the owners realized this mistake and rectified it by buying piece of land from this subject property, reducing the the width of this property by about two feet, which brought the property line right into this townhouse. So two feet of the townhouse were owned now by the by the neighboring building hall. So this situation was eventually rectified by both latest property owners, and easement was created, which would allow renovation of this townhouse and extension, proposed extension in the rear.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. All right, anybody else? Does anybody else have questions for Mr. Bellamy? Or on the easement? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bellamy.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Eddie.
That front of the building, there is not a, I see a fence there. There was no cutout in front of that property. Or they ought to pull up. Let's see.
No.
No, it does not have one?
No, there's no, there's, there's no stairs actually encroaching into the sidewalk, like mostly the old townhomes too.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because some areas in that, in all downtown, they, they do it. It has that similar look.
Yeah, and, and if it, if it makes you feel any better, in fact, we're proposing a, a, a tree and some plantings in the areas where it could go on.
Just, I'm just thinking of other buildings in, in different parts of the neighborhood. To manage your spots like that. Okay, that's right. Thank you.
Alright, thanks Eddie. Okay, anything else, Mr. Joseph?
No, that's, that's it. We do have some conditions from HPC, which of course we're going to agree to comply with as part of this application. But I'll, I'll let Lindsay go through her statement.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anyone's here from the public that wishes to comment, please raise your hand. If you are calling in and you want to comment on this application, please raise your hand. You can press star nine. Anybody from public?
Chair Signo Public, I move to close the public.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Lindsay, do you want to wrap up?
Alright, thank you. I did prepare a staff report dated August ninth, twenty-twenty-one for this application for two-eleven Fifth Street, located in the Harssimus Cove Historic District. So in addition to site plan approval, the applicant is requesting one C variance for a maximum lot coverage. The existing building coverage is a conforming forty-three-point-four percent. And the proposed coverage is sixty-eight-point-four percent, where sixty percent is the max coverage permitted. This is a three-story addition on the rear of the building. And despite the non-conforming building coverage that's proposed, the rear yard setback is a conforming thirty feet and does match the setback of adjacent lot seventeen. The front yard is conforming. They're not making any changes there. There is no side yard setback requirement for historic districts, since the only permitted residential use is for attached townhomes. And the lot coverage is conforming. The project is located in the one-hundred-year floodplain, so they are required to meet the green area ratio of point-two-five, which the applicant is meeting. Since it is in the historic district, they were required to receive Historic Preservation Commission, HPC approval as well, which they did. Meaning the proposed addition and renovation would not have a detrimental effect on the historic district. With that said, staff recommends approval with the conditions outlined in my staff report, which include all HBC conditions to be met and all comments from Jersey City Engineering to be shown on final signature plans.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead. I was just gonna ask you if those are.
The applicant accepts all conditions. The applicant's professionals will work with the city engineer and historic officer to address them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-zero dash one-zero-one is presented to the board tonight.
Back him in.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Alright, Dr. Gonzalez?
Hi.
Commissioner Torres?
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz?
We may have lost Commissioner Cruz.
Alright.
He did have to step off for a little while. I don't know when that was.
No worries. Commissioner Horton?
Hi.
Dr. Desai? Commissioner Allen?
Hi.
And Chairman Langston?
Hi.
Alright, with six-four and unopposed, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, can we bring our attorney back up? She's still on somewhere? Yeah. And in the meantime, let's call the next item is number eleven, case P two-one dash zero-zero-three. Is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for one to five M L K Drive.
Good evening. For the record, Charles Harrington of Conal Foley, on behalf of the applicant. This is a notice case, but asks that they first be reviewed and marked into evidence.
Evening, Councilor. I received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application here before the board this evening. Property address is one-dash-five M L K Drive. All does appear to be in order. Chairman, we can mark those as A1.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
And, and for the record, we have Commissioner Torres back with us.
Commissioner Torres or Commissioner Cruz?
Cruz.
I'm sorry. Oh. I have, have paying attention. I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Chuck.
Okay, great. So, so this matter was carried from the last meeting. It is a project that's in the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. And it's in what's called Zone One of the plan. And we are proposing a six-story building with fifty residential units, one of which will be affordable, because that, that's a requirement of the redevelopment plan, that five percent of any units on the sixth floor of the number of units on the sixth floor shall be affordable. So that would be part of this as well, with fourteen parking spaces. We are requesting two variances. One is with regard to the front yard setback, if you will, and the size of the sidewalk at the corner of M L K Drive and McAdoo Avenue. The other is with regard to the elevator bulkhead on the roof and its setback from, from the, the, the street line. We did, between the last meeting and this meeting, we did have a community meeting presentation that was facilitated by Councilwoman Ridley. So I, I think it went well, but I won't speak. I don't know if any public are here tonight. So with that said, I have three witnesses with us tonight, but I'm, I'm gonna present Richard Garber. He'll walk you through the project. And then Mr. Bellamy will speak to the requested variances. And Mr. Chisvet is our civil engineer, and I'll essentially keep him on the sideline in the event the board has any questions. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Garber to take you through the project.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Hi, Rich. So Ian, do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Richard Garber, G.A.R.B.E.R. Thank you.
Mr. Garber, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Great, thank you very much. Let me just share my screen. Okay, can everyone see the, the screens? This is a, a project, as Chuck said, one-dash-five M L K. We're very excited about this project. It exists at the way southern end of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan, where M L K basically terminates at McAdoo. And as such, is a really, really important corner in that it's a kind of southern gateway into the city. This is the building we're proposing, and I'll talk a little bit more about the design and elevation specifically. To let the board and commissioners know where we, where we are, this is, this is our located again at the corner of McAdoo. In terms of the zoning map, you see that we are at the very, very of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan, at the, at the terminus of M L K, where it's sort of forty-five into Long Street, right at McAdoo. And as such, we, this is a very important site in terms of further an access to the city. This is the existing context images. There's currently a single masonry building used at least partially as a, a religious structure. And then this is our site plan. And we'll talk a little bit more specifically about different site features, as I said. But the way that this works is that you see the unfilled triangles show points of entry into the building or exit. And the, the filled triangle is our vehicle entry for our parking spaces. Terms of design key points, the lot is nine-thousand-five-hundred square feet. All existing structure will be raised. Our proposed building area is forty-five thousand two-hundred-and-sixty square feet. It's a mixed-use occupancy R-two, which is a standard residential use, as well as mercantile for commercial space. There's also some parking. Our proposed building height, six stories and sixty-four feet, eleven and a half inches, very precise. Again, that's all per the redevelopment plan. We are proposing here fifty residential units on floors two through six. In the following mix, we have ten studio units, thirty-one one-bedrooms, and nine two-bedrooms. So it's, as, as it's about a two-thirds or sixty-six percent of the building, the one-bedroom product, which we think is actually quite important, if I go back to my zoning plan, because of our location here. If you look, we're at the southern end of, of, of the Jackson Hill Plan, and we're in a sea of R-one, right? So we actually think that a one-bedroom product ends up being very appropriate here, because if someone wanted, for instance, a larger type unit, a three-bedroom, four-bedroom, there's plenty of housing stock in the immediate vicinity. So, so we feel very confident that, that bringing a, a two-thirds one-bedroom product will be bringing some good housing diversity to this part of town. We do have an elevator proposed, providing wheelchair accessibility to all units. We are proposing one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fourteen square feet of retail. We also think this is important, and we think this is a fair amount of retail for this part of town. We're proposing fourteen parking spaces, just over four-thousand-six-hundred square feet of space for automobile parking. And we have bike storage proposed for twenty-five bikes. Now, Mr. Harrington did suggest that we were, we had two deviations from the plan. These are minor deviations, and they are based on either existing conditions, the first one, which I'll go into in a second, or a kind of specification for, for our, our elevator. In terms of the first deviation, we have a sidewalk issue where ten percent minimum sidewalk width is required for six stories or more. We're at six stories with a fifteen-foot minimum sidewalk with on M L K. As it turns out, we have twelve feet on McAdoo and eleven feet, ten inches, almost twelve feet on M L K. These are existing conditions, and we are proposing to maintain those existing conditions, given the location at the more southern tip of M L K. And secondly, we have an appurtenance deviation for our elevator and stair, specifically the elevator, because of its setback from, from McAdoo. And I'll show that in plan. The setback required would be fifteen-nine, and I think we are at twelve feet eleven, if I'm not mistaken. In terms of our ground floor plan and organization of the building, you can see here some of our key components. We have a curb part, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that curb cut more specifically in a second, on McAdoo to provide vehicle access to fourteen spaces. We have a trash room. Trash will be brought from the trash room out through the garage to this door for collection on McAdoo. So there will be an internal way to store trash in the building, and that includes recycling as well. Two stairs and elevator are shown in orange, as well as amenities, including a laundry room and a gym right at the corner. Pretty cushy corner gym with lobby. And our retail is the nineteen thousand, nineteen hundred, excuse me, square feet of retail is located here with two distinct entries on M L K. This could be subdivided. We imagine it could be subdivided into three smaller units. But we hope, and we're working with the owner on this, that, that we can find one large retail use here, like a market or something like that, which badly needed in the area. I put this drawing up. This is a lead ad. This is the civil plan. There was an issue or, or something brought up in Lishwan's engineering report, which, which basically suggested that the five-by-five grid that is required for the sidewalk pavers be maintained. We have a smaller grid only in the curb cut. And this is important, because we think that that smaller grid, that break in the rhythm of the sidewalk subdivisions really is a visual device to alert pedestrians that this is an affected driveway. So this is something that we, we would like to maintain to the extent possible, should, should the board think that that makes sense. I certainly do. Moving forward, our second through fifth floor plans stack. And this is important. We have roof decks proposed over the vehicle parking on the second floor only with access from the rear units. And you can see the way that our units break down. We have primarily, again, one-bedrooms and a sixty-six percent bedroom product with some two-bedrooms, especially at the corner, that are, are worked through here. I want to also bring up, you can see coated in green, these kinds of triangular wedges. These are setbacks that we're proposing, and this figures prominently into the design and aesthetics of the elevation. What we're doing here is we have certain portions of the building that project out above, out beyond the the lot line, and these are all above, eleven feet above the sidewalk elevation. So as such, are made by I B C. And then we pull certain portion of the building back behind the sightline. So when you, when you look at what this is doing, and you'll see this in elevation, this is really done to, to, to establish a kind of rhythm that breaks down the scale of the building a little bit, as it is an allowed building, but it is a big building as, as the first one to go into this part of town. So moving forward, we have here the floor, the, the, the sixth floor plan setback even more. So you see the kind of green wedges that I alerted the board to before, get a little bit larger. And, and then these become a series of plate shelves, as well as exterior balconies for this floor. We're treating the sixth floor with a bit of glass, so it really is operating as a series of penthouse units. And again, all units are arranged around a double-loaded corridor, super-efficient building in this kind of L shape, so that the rear corner setback allows for, the record here, light and air for the units that face inward as opposed to outward. In terms of the roof, all we're showing is one stair and a mechanical area. I want to be clear that there is no roof deck posed here on top of the building. The elevations, we're, we're actually quite excited about. This is a mix of cementous fiber panel, which is the lighter colored materials, as well as brick, which is the darker gray. And again, if you remember the way that the, the plans were working, what we're doing is we're pulling architectural features, almost like bay window type moves out from the site, out from the lot line, and we're pulling in to create these kinds of wedge-shaped balconies as well, all to create a rhythm and encourage a kind of visual perspective, if you will, on the street. Now, this is the McAdoo side. You see here our sixth floor with a lot of glass. And then on the M L K side, you see very much the same here, same kind of concept. You see the retail glazing here on the lower right side of the building. This corner is the gym, and if I go back a second, I just want to call attention to our main entry point, which is here. This is the residential lobby, as well as the garage, which is further west on McAdoo. All the windows are aluminum-clad, black-framed windows, so they're darker windows, mix of casement and and fixed panels on the front. And then on the sides, we have a series of smaller windows that are for access. And these are a combination of single-hung windows and fixed panels. That are for um, access and these are a combination of single-hung windows and fixed panels uh, as well. Uh, this was the um, the uh, rendering, uh, previous rendering that was um, published in the Jersey Journal and um, excuse me, Jersey Diggs. And I never liked when that happened, so we sort of up the here with a night view. Uh, and uh, this really, I I think really speaks to uh, the the, again, the rhythm on the street and this idea of allowing the facade to. And pull and sort of be a play, have a playful relationship to the lot line. Above the first floor and what that's doing is break down the scale of the building and I think a um, a a nice way. And allowing for some outdoor space as well. Uh, so we're really excited about this building. We think that it's going to be a great addition to um, this part of town. And um, finally, as uh, Mr. Harrington said, we did just meet with the councilwoman. Uh, last week, we did a Zoom with her constituents constituents that she had set up. And we also met um, uh, when we initially started working on the project last October. Um, with uh, Michelle Massey and her group. We also had a Zoom call with the pastor who uh, who runs the church on the corner opposite us. Uh, and shared the plans with him and had a conversation with him as well. So we think we have done some good community outreach here and uh, again, are excited about the project. That concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Garber. And if we could, um, I don't think we have that night view in our packet. If we could mark that A two. And have that submitted.
Sure. I'll I'll send the entire PowerPoint just to make sure you have it.
Gotcha. Thank you. Um, okay, the only question I really have is uh. The affordable unit on the sixth floor. I just want to make sure that that's constructed with the same materials as the rest of the units on the sixth floor.
Yes, of course.
Yes, it would be.
We have shaded that unit here, uh, Mr. Langston. I've I forgot to to call this out. And so it is um, not a varied unit, you know, it is a unit that fronts MLK and.
That, yeah, that was my next question. So that's going to have a uh, a private balcony also?
It does.
That's nice to hear.
Well, I think, I mean, it could, and I'm just saying this for the record, it it could absolutely be that unit. But ultimately, we have to finalize that issue with the uh, division of affordable housing. So while you know that that's the one we're proposing now, um, it it is ultimately up to them. Uh, when they, when we uh. Negotiate that that agreement, which is pretty straightforward, but they'll they'll essentially say, we we'd like it here and we'd like a. You know, what unit count, bedroom mix? So that's, that's something we have to further review with them.
Okay, understood. Yeah, I hope they would.
Yeah.
balcony was a plus, but.
Yes, yeah, I would think so.
I hope. Um, all right, that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. Uh, there is a park around there, which is known as Triangle Park. And there is so, I see cops standing there and so much activities going on. So how far is the building from that Triangle Park?
So uh. Let me just look on the site plan and see if I can um, find that. I think the Triangle Park you're talking about is this one down here, which is at the terminus. So you can see we are, you know, MLK terminates into Long Street, Long Street. Drops down into Rose, you know, half a block. Uh, in front of that that park. So we are, you know, we're in the vicinity, but we're we're about two blocks away.
Do, and uh, how much uh, roadside parking is, if you have like the real, I mean, uh, the stores and everything over there? How much parking you have outside?
So I, at this point, there are a number of different curb cuts. And thank you, this is a good question and something I want to make clear. Uh, a number of curb cuts all along both MLK and at least one curb cut on McAdoo. What we are proposing is maintaining um, in the approximate location, the curb cut on McAdoo. And that's going to be our garage entry, McAdoo forming the sort of minor street on the corner here. And all curb cuts on MLK are vacated. So what that does is it permits uh, more street parking than is currently uh, currently allowed. Because we're vacating those curb cuts, which one cannot legally park in front of.
And one more question, uh, there is balconies on the second floor, how far up it is from the street level?
The balconies on the second floor, well, the balconies on the second floor are not seen from the street level, right? So so um, to answer the question specifically, let me just go to the elevation. So the second floor finish is at twelve feet, six inches off of grade. But the the, oh, so so the small balconies. If that's what you're you're referring to on on Mount McAdoo, there's three of them. And on MLK, there are three of them. Those are at twelve-six off. And these are small balconies, they're very modest. There's not going to be, you know, there there probably two people can be on them at any given time. They're not, they're not very large. We do have the larger balconies in the rear of the building, but the rear of the building, excuse me, is landlocked. So these are not accessible from the street and you have the buffer of, you know, about sixty, sixty or so, not not more. Feet of building um, in front of uh, in front of us. So so we're quite, quite confident that where we do have larger balconies for congregation. There won't be any disruption because of sound or anything like that.
Thank you.
Welcome. Anybody else? Any questions?
Yes, I have one question. Oh, good, good evening, Mr. Good evening, Mr. Garber. Um, for the people coming out of the parking lot. Will there be a no left turn? Or would that be a question for a traffic engineer?
We, uh, to my knowledge, that has not been uh, something that has been asked of us in terms of the review agents. Um, McAdoo is not a particularly busy street. I mean, MLK certainly is. And that's why we decided to actually put the um, the the driveway on. As a matter of fact, there's this curb cuts uh, and driveways on MLK are not permitted in the redevelopment plan. So we put it on the minor street. Um, we're only talking about fourteen spaces. So I don't, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I, you know, I it it, given the the amount of spaces. And um, what I know of McAdoo, I'm not, I don't, I don't necessarily foresee a problem here.
And and that that was not raised as a comment in the review letter and they, they do typically raise it if they, if they have a concern. The Jersey City Engineering Department.
Okay, uh, and second question, um, of course, as always about ride sharing and food delivery. Inside of the um, parking lot, would there be enough room for, let's just say, a delivery pizza guy to run in? Run out and leave the parking lot, or they would have to make their delivery from the street?
Um, that's a good question. Uh, you know, we we haven't, we haven't dedicated the way the parking is. Uh, is is being utilized. What we're basically showing here is just simply fourteen spaces. Uh, you know, that's something we can, we can look at. Now, I I will remind um, you commissioner that we are vacating. Two curb cuts on MLK. And so what that's doing is providing some additional, um, you know, some additional uh, parking ability on the street. We do have a curb flare here that you see. Uh, that's something, but but you know, if it's something that you'd like us to report back to you about, we can certainly talk to the owner. Uh, you know, and and see if there's some we can do here in terms of deliveries. I don't think it's a bad question for sure.
Okay, no, and the only reason I'm asking is I know the next case is building across the street. Right now, there's no. That's all.
And I just did uh, that, you know, I'm looking at the site plan for the ground floor. There is direct access to the lobby from the garage. So if that's something that the ownership wanted to pursue, it probably is an option um, that they could have deliveries there and. And people could meet them in the lobby and and get their deliveries and go.
Um, my only concern with that is, is that would. Probably mean someone would be backing out of that garage.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Probably just pull straight in um. You know, park in between the sprinkler room and the bike room and run into the lobby. Um, that that would be.
Right, that's.
Best thing if someone backs out across that sidewalk.
It's a very good point. So we'd we'd have to, we'd have to review it. I mean, as as proposed now, I don't think we envision that that the packages. Deliveries would take place in and out of the garage. So that's something that we'd have to look at a little closer.
Okay.
So right now, we have uh, uh. Mr. Chairman, we do have a package room, um, which is modest, but off the lobby. Um, and as as we imagine, you know, what what typically happens. And and I know that the streets are, you know, are full and then this is something that we deal with in in town all the time. But, you know, typically the the trucks will park in in a location on the block. And they'll run multiple packages into multiple buildings based on the proximity of where they park. I mean, that's at least what happens on on my street. Um, and um, you know, as such, assuming that you you know, they 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 wheel out hand trucks to bring packages. So so we imagine that um, deliveries would be accepted through the front door, through the lobby and stored. In a dedicated package room that, you know, delivery services would have. Kind of access to.
Okay.
And that's, that's a fairly typical way of handling. Um, you know, delivery. I I know there's obviously been an increase in 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 deliveries, you know, that's that's definitely something that we've seen in the last twenty months. Um, but um, you know, that's, that's how we've handled it.
Okay. Uh, anybody else? Any questions?
It's a quick question from Commissioner Horton for either Mr. Harrington or Mr. Garber. Has your client possibly thought about suing any uh, year parking, especially there's retail in that area? I don't think there's any current meter parking close that area.
Pursuing any, what, meter parking?
Yeah, I don't know if there's a, I know I've seen products in the past, they've approached traffic engineer about meter parking or. And some kind of meter park in this retail and that kind of stuff added.
Oh, we have not. We we haven't, we haven't looked into that at all.
All right, just curious. Um, I had one follow-up question. As for the trash room, is that accessible by both the retail area and the residents?
Uh, that's a great question. No, the the retail will will be required to fit out its own. So we're delivering the retail as what what is called white box. And the retail establishment will be required to store its own uh, its own um, trash inside. So that's a dedicated trash room for the residents and we will uh, we generally make sure that um, trash storage. Is handled by the tenant and it will be inside the building.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
And uh, Mr. Garber, just to jump on that. Same thought, um, there's a. I I didn't even look. Is there a trash riser in there or the uh? Is trash collected and brought down?
Right, so if you look, we have a dedicated trash room with a compactor. On uh, on on all the floors that we.
See them now.
Yep, right in the, right where the um, and I should have brought that up also. Um, but right where the um, the hallway comes together. So we're both length of the building kind of come together. So it's a, it's a very centrally located uh, room.
Okay, understood. Uh, anybody else? Any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Garber.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, I'm going to move on to Mr. Bellamy to to address the requested variances. And I just remind the board that Mr. Chizved is here if they have any engineering questions as well. But um, that said, Sam or I saw you somewhere there, you are upper right.
And Sam, if you could just uh, clarify that you are still under oath?
Yep, I remain under oath.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bellamy.
Okay, so I'm getting into my testimony. Uh, as Mr. Harrington mentioned, this property is located in Zone One, the neighborhood mixed-use district of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. Um, the deviations we're requesting tonight is for the minimum sidewalk width. Um, at the narrowest point, we're proposing um, which is the existing sidewalk with eleven feet, ten inches. Um, where the the minimum required is fifteen feet and that's for building six stories or greater and located on MLB, MLK Drive. Um, so for the other sidewalk along McAdoo, it's a twelve-foot sidewalk. Um, there's, that sidewalk width is a a ten-foot minimum. Um, because it's one of the the side streets there. So we actually are complying with it along McAdoo. Um, but MLK Junior um, Drive where it narrows down is where we're asking for the the deviation. Um, and it really, at the corner of McAdoo and um, MLK Junior Drive. Um, and they, that sidewalk increases, it bumps out to um, maximum about sixteen and a half feet. Um, so really at the corner there, you do have a a greater sidewalk width. Um, and that will really facilitate, well, if there's pedestrians waiting to cross um, the street there. And um, it's also at the corner where our entrance to the residential is proposed. Um, getting into where we're asking for the deviation along um, MLK Junior Drive. Um, we are proposing a, the the entryways into the commercial spaces to be um, set back three feet into the building. So in those more um. Frequented areas that that pedestrians will be um, entering the store or exiting onto the street, you do have a little greater width there to um, facilitate that. We also are proposing this, the two street trees. Um, and the sidewalk width is um, wide enough to accommodate those um, typical dimensions, um, five foot wide and still have pedestrians able to. Um, enjoy the the active streetscape that we're proposing there. Um, so the other setback that um, variance that we're asking for is for the setback of the rooftop structure. Um, we are proposing um, the setback to be great enough to uh, the one foot, one inch, the the stairway step back from MLK Junior Drive. The the variances for the uh, the elevator bulkhead um, along McAdoo, which is the secondary frontage, but still has that same requirement. Um, this uh, appearance does have mechanicals at the top, so it is a little taller and requires a greater um, setback. So we're proposing um, a setback of twelve feet, eleven inches, um, where fifteen feet, two inches would be required there. Um, and and this bulkhead really does provide a secondary um, access to the roof and is centered on on the building. And consistent with the redevelopment plan, which does contemplate um, a ten-foot setback for um, enclosed amenity spaces. So really, um, this setback in the center of the building um, to to reduce any sight from um, the pedestrian views. And so getting into the the negative criteria, um, these, with these variances, there won't be any substantial detriment to the general welfare. Um, we are proposing an active streetscape along um, the corner there and along MLK Junior Drive. And we are removing an exist, an existing non-conforming curb cut along MLK Junior Drive and keeping the curb cut on McAdoo, which is the the um. Uh, less frequented um, vehicle street. Um, and then we are proposing new um, wall-mounted lighting to increase safety along the sidewalk there. Um, so really from a functional standpoint, the sidewalk width that we're proposing could accommodate it because we do have the wider at the corner. And um, also a a greater width um, in front of the entryways. And then from a visual perspective, I think Mr. Garber got into this. Um, both that serrated building design and the this, the step back on the um, sixth floor really um. Really speaks to the the design going towards um, the requirement of the front yard setback. Um, creates a visual interest and also um, the the change in facade materials. Um, and the and the setbacks of the structures, um, the structures will be a consistent facade material, um, a light succo. Consistent with the the materials of the of the building. Um, so likewise, there won't be any substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. And we do meet the purpose of the um, neighborhood commercial district. Um, by uh, providing for that that active streetscape, the retail at the corner there. Um, at that, as Mr. Garber said, at the corner and this entryway into the city, into the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan area. And we do uh, promote several objectives of the redevelopment plan. Um, we reestablished a Jackson Hill corridor as a vibrant neighborhood commercial district. Um, by providing that retail, the the housing options, we are providing the one affordable housing consistent with the redevelopment plan. And then we are um, providing hopefully a a mix of um, retail that would really add to this this corridor. Um, so it is my opinion that the the variances that we're asking for tonight can be um, granted pursuant to the C-two criteria. Wherein the benefits of the um, variances will outweigh any detriment. Um, and then the positive, uh, the, the proposed project does meet both the positive and negative criteria. Um, I think that concludes my direct, um, oh, uh. And of course, this project does advance several purposes of the municipal land use plan. Um, purpose A, it is appropriate use and development. Um, this is a um, consistent density. Um, we are providing setbacks um, in the interior of the building, the L-shaped upper floors to allow for light and air, consistent with purpose C. And then obviously, um, we are promoting a a visual environment, um, adding the street trees, new sidewalks and this beautiful building at the corner. Um, so with that, that concludes my direct testimony, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bellamy. Um, yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else?
That was good.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So I mean, that concludes our presentation. I would just, uh, remind the board that in the event this is approved, we are asking as part of the application to, uh, have relief from that comment number three on the engineering list so that we can keep that scoring pattern.
Yeah, I think that's actually a good idea to, to change that scoring pattern there. Okay, understood.
Still, uh, I got a question with the engineering. Yeah, Charles, if you could answer.
Yep.
The, uh, one of the questions, uh, comments in the report is the, uh, storage of trash things in the back of the building. Am I correct on that? Are, uh, we're not doing that? We just put the trash outside?
What comment is that?
My, or that I, that my, I'm just wondering, but I'm trying to get it to come up again on my tablet.
Yeah.
I own the same thing then?
Yeah, I don't see that.
You don't see it, okay? It was at the end of the engineer report, it might have jumped into a different report. So I'm trying to figure that out now. I'm looking now so much. So there is, because I don't see it under the architect, so I was when we
If I can, if I can speak to that, uh, so, uh, in, in Juan's report, item 12, lists please include sanitation handling planner notes, including but not limited to trash, recycling and bulk waste. And so, uh, in addressing that, I shared, uh, the location of the trash room being internal to the building as well as, and I can put the plan back up if you want, the dedicated direction from the trash room through the garage out to McAdoo for collection.
Okay. I'll go with that then. I'll go with that. Something jumped on my tab. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Um, all right. At this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's in public, I see a hand raised already. Uh, if anybody wishes to comment, please raise your hand. And once again, if you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hands.
Promoting Victor Fuzz. Okay, one moment. I'm attempting to do this, but it doesn't seem like it wants to. Victor, are you there? You need to unmute yourself. Hey Victor, I think we can hear you. Are you able to turn your video on?
Yes, yes, I'm on.
All right, great. Can you turn your video on?
Okay.
I'm not sure you do, sir. I'm not seeing that option next to your name.
No.
All right. So that's some kind of technical issue then? Yeah. All right. Uh, if you guys are good to proceed, I'll just wear him in.
Sure, that's fine.
All right. Thanks. Uh, Victor, do you swear that any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you could just state and spell your name for me, please.
Victor F U Z Z.
Thank you.
Mr. Fuzz, good evening. It's Chairman Langston. Uh, we have five minutes for you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there is no parking in, in front of that building. For one, it's a bus stop. It's about, the bus stop is about 100 feet. The reason why I know that is because I own the building.
The current building you own or the, the proposed building?
No, I own the current building.
Okay.
Yes, and, and when the church get to funeral, there is no parking at all, at all, even on McAdoo side.
And you're talking about the church across the street, right?
Yes, yes, right alongside of me.
Sure, yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, it's not really on this applicant to provide parking for, for another property.
No, 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 I'm talking about the retail business. There is no parking for the retail business.
Okay, so your concern is the parking for the retail.
Yes, yes.
We, we can't remove a bus stop. Um, council is, there is a bus stop there?
Yes, it's about 100 feet.
Okay, and that's on the MLK side, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, yeah, obviously we're not going to remove a bus stop.
No intention of doing that.
Yeah.
And parking isn't required for that retail space.
Understood. Um,
it also sounded like the curb cuts are there, so I think removing them, there's going to open up more parking, some misunderstanding.
Um, all right, let's just finish up with Mr. Fuzz and then we'll, uh, we'll explore this. Mr. Fuzz, anything else?
So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so I guess, Mr. Garber, uh, the curb cuts that we're eliminating, um, are they in the bus stop, I'm assuming?
Uh, I, I, I don't know off the top of my head. Um, we're looking at the drawings right now, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, obviously the, the intent is to vacate the curb cuts regardless. However, in no way do we propose, did we ever intend for the project to, um, you know, get in the way of a public, a functioning public transportation stop or so.
Yeah, of course. I'm just curious, you know, the length of that bus stop, if, um, you know, if I eliminating any curb cuts, are we creating any parking? That's my only question.
Yeah, it looks like, uh, I'm, I'm just getting a, a text right now. I mean, it looks like the bus stop is actually, maybe behind.
Yeah, the, the curb cut is within the, the bus stop.
So the
And it's one, it's one curb cut.
Okay, so by eliminating the curb cut, we're actually not providing any new parking, correct?
We may, yeah, we may not be, but certainly going to, uh, eliminate the conflicts of the curb cut in the bus, in the bus stop.
Yeah, like I said, we're not going to eliminate a bus stop.
Right.
Um, okay, let's move on, everybody. Uh, anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hands. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody else from public?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion to close the public.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to close public. Public is closed. Uh, Tim, do you have anything else you want to add?
Uh, just that, uh, I felt that the, uh, the two variances requested, uh, were minor in nature and, uh, this project, um, will bring much needed development to the area that has seen some development, but you could use more. Um, also that, um, Mr. Harrington and the applicant work with the Division of Affordable Housing and Chapter 188 of the Municipal Code in getting the proper, uh, affordable unit where it needs to be, uh, and work with them. Um, otherwise, uh, planning is very happy with the project and, uh, approves of the new development.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P21-003 as presented tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
I love the project. Uh, good job. I think it's needed. Um, and I think it's going to be great for the community and the city there. So good job with that. I vote I.
Commissioner Torres.
Yeah, it is a nice project, like always. It's a very beautiful design. Um, I vote I.
Commissioner Horton.
About I.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
Yeah, I know that area so well because I own properties there. And this project is going to improve the area and I vote I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I had to recuse because I wasn't on all the times since.
And Chairman Langston.
Uh, I.
All in favor, motion passes Commissioner Cruz.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a break now?
Uh, sure. If you think that was a good time.
Okay, yeah, let's, uh, let's take 10, everybody. The time is 6:55. Uh, we'll be back at 7:05. Thank you. All right, could we come to order again, everybody? And for anybody attending the meeting, we do have a few items carried tonight. You could check the chat. And they are listed in the chat. But let's move on to item twelve is case P two one dash zero four five is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variance. For thirty to thirty-two McAdoo app.
Mr. Rose, are you?
Okay, just. Good evening. My name is Stephen Rose. I represent LG Beta One LLC, the applicant for this matter. This, as mentioned, this is a application for major site plan approval. And we requesting one variance. Of the variance of. Has to do with the existing driveway cut on Martin Luther King Boulevard. Of the applicant intends to build a twenty-four unit building, five-story building. With five off-street parking spots. The applicant. Meets all the zoning bulk requirements. And it's only this one. Variance that that we're requesting in addition to site plan approval. The applicant. Already with the Jackson Hill. Redevelopment District Representatives and with the Commissioner. As she requested at the last meeting. I only have one witness this evening. That is the architect and planner, Tom Meskut. Who will be available. To testify. And that the exhibit that I presented be admitted into evidence.
So Chairman, let's start with the notice. I am receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application here this evening. Thirty dash thirty-two McAdoo Avenue in the city. All does appear in order will mark those as A one for the record. Counsel, the board does not mark anything that was submitted with your application package. Those. Documents are all part of the record and do not get marked individual. That being stated, if your witness has any. Documents or exhibits that he's going to share this evening that are different. Even if those differences are colored renderings. Those can be marked and the witness can identify them. And we can continue marking as his testimony is presented. A two, a three, et cetera, et cetera.
Mr. Meskut, have you appeared before this board before as an expert?
Yes, I have.
And let me just swear him in real quick. You swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
For the record, could you state by your name, please?
It's Thomas Messick, M.E.S.U.K.
Thank you.
Mr. Messick, yes, we've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight as an architect and a planner?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified again.
Thank you.
Mr. Messick, we described the project for the board.
Sure, I'm going to share my screen. That'll make it easier to present everything. And, okay. So a little bit of housekeeping, and I do want to just do this ahead of time because then it will make it a whole lot easier to present the project. We did make some updates to the exterior of the building. We had our community board meeting just a little bit about a week ago. And we took some of the community comments into consideration and we did make some updates. So I have right now a side-by-side. Plan. The plan on the left, and I believe it's on the left of everybody's screen, right now where the. Hand is pointing. That is the set that was submitted and is online, you know, that everybody can view. If from the agenda. The plan on the right is the updated plan. So the one difference in the T one sheet. Is our parapet height changed a little bit. And I'll show you this when we get to the elevation. We had.
So let's do this. Let's mark. As A two. The revised. Set of drawings. Did you put a revision date on those?
Yes, it has today's date as a revision date. So eight, ten, two thousand twenty-one.
Those will be marked as A two. Why don't you just testify from those? And as you go through them, you can highlight.
Okay, that would be a whole lot easier. So I'm going to minimize that and I will. Make this one bigger.
And so. But as I was saying. Of course, you'll have to submit those to the board.
Yes, of course.
And just before we go on, this is Cameron's application. Matt, are you handling Cameron's tonight?
Yeah, I'm handling this application. I reviewed the documents. I've also spoke with. The architectural record here, Tom. Earlier today and was able to look at these plans and determine that this is not a substantial change. And I think. He'll be able to testify to what what's what's in this revised drawing, which. To me was facade changes, really material changes.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you had a chance to review it. All right, thank you. All right.
So yeah, as as Matt mentioned, basically, it was some minor facade changes and not even so much material changes, but color changes. So the one thing that we did change on the front, you know, cover page was our parapet height. The documents that were submitted, we had a parapet of fifty-six feet nine inches. But then we had feature parapets that went up to like fifty-eight, ten. What we wound up doing, and you'll see in a second, is we lowered the parapet height. So well, the higher parapet height down to fifty-seven foot three. So what I will do is let me take you through the project first, starting with. The the location. So we are located at the corner of McAdoo and Martin Luther King Drive. We're actually opposite of the previous applicant that. I just presented their project. An hour ago or so. So our lot is a forty-four foot lot by a hundred foot lot on the corner. Because it's actually two lots combined. And we are looking to put on as. Mr. Rose had indicated, we're looking to put on a five-story, twenty-four-unit mixed-use building. So it's again. Very similar. It's going to be an R two slash M, you know, in terms of use group type. In terms of zoning, we meet all the the zone requirements in terms of setbacks. The building height and the only variance that we are seeking is currently there is a curb cut on Martin Luther King Drive. About three-quarters of the way down the property that we would like to utilize to access our underbuilding parking. We have parking for five spaces below. And I'll get into the the reasoning a little bit here. What I'd like to do is I'm going to just zoom in this plan here. Currently, there is a crosswalk that crosses McAdoo. And there is also a curb cut for. Handicapped accessibility on the curb for the the crosswalk. And there are some other various. Electronics for the the crosswalk sign. And let me just bring up this image here. This is a. Map image of the area. So you can see the the crosswalk kind of falls dead center of our property. We have the. The crosswalk sign and the depressed curb here for the crossing. So getting a curb cut on McAdoo would be very difficult to access this site. Plus, it's also very close to the corner, so also creating some issues with that. So we are requesting the one variance for use of an existing curb cut. We're not proposing it. We're just asking for use of the existing. Currently, as you could have saw for that that photo or the photo I have on our drawing, the the lot is a. Just a used car park or a parking lot. Right now. And you can, in the bottom corner of this photo, right in front of this car, you can see the the existing curb cut here.
So one moment, Tom, that that I think we should mark that. Google Street View is a.
This one is A three. Okay.
It's looking north from McAdoo up MLK Drive and it's showing the crosswalk on McAdoo.
Correct.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thank you. So getting back to the project, I'm going to go past these sheets, but. This is our ground floor plan. So right now we're proposing to do a retail space, which is. Seven hundred and thirty square feet. Our primary entry to the apartments is on McAdoo Avenue. We do have a mail package room in the back corner. Our sprinkler room is in here. And then our primary access stair with our elevator to access the upper floors is center of the building here. Behind that, we do have a trash room here. It would have a trash chute that accesses all floors. Trash can be then be brought out the back door, down the alley and out to the street. Our garage is on the the north end of the building. Again, we have parking for five cars. One of the parking spaces would be an ADA spot. And we also have bicycle parking for twenty-five bicycles. The last item on the ground floor plan is our emergency access there in the the back left corner. Here again is our curb cut shown, the existing curb cut to access our parking garage. And again, it's about two-thirds of the way down the property on Martin Luther King Drive. Going to the typical floor plan. Now, this would be typical for the floor, the four floors above, so floors two, three, four, and five. We have six residential units, two of which would be. Studio apartments and four would be one-bedroom apartments. So for a total of eight studios and sixteen one-bedroom apartments in the entire building. Back corner here, we have a. This was one of our studios. This quarter in here would be a one-bedroom. This would be another one-bedroom. In the middle would be a studio. The apartment on the left would be another one-bedroom. And then along the back of the building is the final one-bedroom. All apartments have built-in laundry. Unit closets within them. And then, of course, like I mentioned earlier, our stair, central stair here, access stair in our elevator or in the middle. Getting moving on to the elevation. Oh, before I do that, the roof, we do have roof access. There is no roof amenities. It's strictly just HVAC mechanical. So our access is primarily just for accessing the HVAC units and our elevator overrun. It would be part of that enclosure. Moving on to the elevations, I'm going to go to this elevation first. This is the elevation along MLK Drive. And this is where our primary change was, we had a larger, our original plan that was submitted, our corners had. Like an enlarged cornice, which was actually. On the corner and then in the middle. So. Based on some of the changes that we wanted to make, we made the cornice pretty more uniform. So we have the. The main cornice at fifty-seven foot three, which is here, and then our dropdown, just to give it a little bit of character and to break up the facade a little bit. The other key change was the entire top of the building will be. Part of the the hardy reveal panel system, which is a cement board panel with reveal lines in it. And that was always our intent was to do that with the facade of the building. We did look at now adding a few more reveal lines and adding some color to pop things and just to make it a little bit more interesting. You're rather than before we had, like, our tower was one color, our central tower, the same, and the end tower were all the same color. But now we we've decided to add a little bit of, you know, more interest with color just above and below each of the windows. The other change was the the brick base. We had originally utilized a gray color brick. And based on our community board meeting, they requested to see a little bit more color in the project. So we went to a red brick on the base. This entry here is our primary entry to the. Retail space. These windows would be all retail-based windows. And then our garage access, of course, would be down here. And we're proposing two shade trees along Martin Luther King Drive. This is the the back of the building facing the property. So this would be our access doors out to the corridor. So emergency egress here. This door here would be our trash room door. And then we would, of course, need ventilation, you know, for our parking garages. And then the windows from the rear-facing unit face that back courtyard. This elevation here is our primary McAdoo elevation. Again, this entry here is our primary entry to the units. We were requested by Michelle Massey to add a secondary means of egress from our commercial space, which we did over here. And then these windows here would also be part of that commercial space. Again, you know, all these up here would, all these windows up here would be for our units upstairs. And again, the primary minor changes were just color and the cornice from the set that was originally submitted back in July. That's available on that web link. Just to go through a little bit other things, you know, again, much like the last application, we are at the southern end of the. Jackson Hill redevelopment district. I will bring up this drawing down here. Our site sits right here, again, the southern end of the redevelopment district and. Let's see. In terms of the the building, that's pretty much our presentation on the building. You know, in terms of from the planning perspective, where we meet all the the requirements. Of the redevelopment district, aside from the use of the existing curb cut. You know, we do advance the land use plan. We are within our density requirements. We are adding trees. A nicer building to what's an existing car lot. So if anybody has any questions, we can answer any questions you have.
Yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And if you could just stop, please stop sharing your screen for us.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Counsel, anything else? Is that your presentation?
No, just in conclusion, what my client intends, what the applicant intends to do, they're. Taking it what's an existing. Lot with with cars on it, replacing it with a beautiful building. I'd also like to add that they're presently two lots in this. And we're, I'm going to make an applica, if this is approved, I'm going to make an application to consolidate the two lots into one. Tax map lots I'm talking about.
Santo, do we have to do that on on the same night?
No, I have to, I have to apply to the council, I believe, for that.
Consolidated on the tax map.
On the tax map, that's correct.
Yeah, it's not before this board.
Okay, got it. Subdivision, then. Okay. All right, um, at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody from the public wishes to comment, please raise your hand. And once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
Need no public. I moved to close the public portion, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, so I was able to review this application. I want to just put up on the screen Cameron's staff memo dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one regarding the site. The site is forty-four feet by one hundred. In the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan, which is one of our few corridor redevelopment plans where. The majority of it is is one or one strip or one corridor such as MLK or Monticello in in this case. The majority of the lots that front on that street have a short side facing MLK and the long dimension of that lot. Is the depth. This is the opposite. They only have forty-four feet of depth and the standard. And the standard for which they are asking for variance relief from is related to to that directly. It says on corner lots, it's anticipated that the access would be from the side street. In this case, the particularity of this site with the crosswalk right there. Dead center on their lot depth really prohibited them from making any sort of access for their parking from that location. So they're asking for relief from that standard and and have it on MLK. They worked with staff on the design of this building. There was previous versions that were looking to try to do access from McAdoo and it's deemed unfeasible and detrimental. To the design. They are complying with the the other standards of the redevelopment plan. The changes to the facade are acceptable following the 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 public outreach. There are six conditions that staff recommends should the board make. Make a motion to approve this project. And we would like to just ask if the councils has had time to review this memo and if. The applicant would agree to comply with these conditions.
Yes, we did review it and will and the applicant will comply.
All right. If there's any questions by the board, I'll, I'm here to answer them. Otherwise, that wraps up staff comment.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Anybody, any questions for Matt? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion then at this time to approve case P two one dash zero four five is presented to the board tonight.
Motion made and seconded for approval.
And a motion approved with conditions, Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez.
I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I.
Commissioner Torres.
I.
Commissioner Allen.
I.
Commissioner Horton.
I.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
It's an I for me. I do want to thank Michelle Massey. I think the change is a better project, absolutely. Counsel, if you could have those revisions on the the signature plans for me.
Yes, so Tom, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
All right, motion carries all in favor on a motion approved with conditions.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item thirty, this case P two one. Dash zero three nine is a preliminary and final major subdivision. The address being eight twenty six Central Ave, also known as Two Central Ave.
If there's any other professionals associated with this project, if you could please raise your hand. All right, Hugh, I think you have the floor. Are you able to start your video?
All right, good evening, everyone, this chair members commissioned. My name is Hugh McGuire. I'm the attorney for the county of Hudson. This is our presentation of the matter for the subdivision of the property, which will be the future site of the. Guarini Justice Center. I see is, I'm just looking at my list here. I don't see. Mister Ludwig is he our. Site surveyor?
He is there.
I'm not seeing him online for some reason.
He has his video started. He's here.
Now, there he is. He's popped up now. Okay, very good. All right, we have already submitted our. Affidavit of service and and publication.
Thank you, counsel. Chairman, I am receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application. For eight twenty six Central Ave, also known as Two Central Ave. I would read the blocks and lots, but they are, so all does appear to be in order and I am sure. They will go through the blocks and lots since this is to subdivide.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
This basically just as some preliminary information, the, there was actually a section thirty one hearing before the board. On March twenty third, twenty two thousand twenty one, where the courthouse project was presented. What we are here for tonight is a follow up to that and at the request of the board and also of the city. For the subdivision and the approval of the subdivision plan. The reason we've really, I think we're doing it this way and having to do the subdivision because this will include. Two areas that are going to be dedicated back to the city. One will be the new Central Avenue. Which Mister Ludwig will talk about in a moment and the other will be a widening of the Oakland Avenue. Corridor. So. Previously to this, there was a resolution. It was the city ordinance. I have it up here for a second. We just cite the right, right one. That was ordinance nineteen dash zero ninety, and that was passed in two thousand and nineteen, which vacated both Cook. And Cook Street and portion of. Hoboken Avenue, which will be a walkway through between the two buildings, the new courthouse building and the garage for the courthouse building. Mister, we have Mister Ludwig's one. I'll call him Mister Keith Ludwig.
Hi Keith, you hear me?
I do.
All right, just raise your right hand.
Yes, sir.
For any testimony you're going to give tonight, it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
For the record, if you could state your name, please.
Keith Ludwig, L U D W I G.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, Mister Ludwig, if you just would mind putting your professional information on the record.
Certainly, I am a New Jersey professional land surveyor. I have over forty years of experience. I have a bachelor's degree in land surveying from NJIT. I am professionally licensed in seven other states. I have appeared in front of the New Jersey Superior Court for boundary dispute cases. And I instruct surveying for Rowan University.
Okay, Mister Ludwig, your license is current in the state of New Jersey as well tonight.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And counsel, before we get into his testimony, we did hear the section thirty one. The board. Is very familiar with the new proposed building and I've reviewed the. Subdivision plat, I reviewed the ordinances, I'm clear as to vacating and whatnot that's happening, so. Mister Ludwig could make it pretty simple for us, put up the proposed plat. We understand there'll be vacating and dedication, so I think we don't need to go through the entire. Presentation as it pertains to the courthouse itself.
Correct. I I was just going to ask Mister Ludwig just to basically put on the record the. The block and lot designations and also the size and air of the lots. If the board doesn't think that's completely necessary, it's all laid out on the plan. I could just, you know, we could let the board ask questions if they have any issues with it and we can go that way, if you think that's better.
I think we should just show the plat, explain what's being vacated and dedicated, and then I think the. Lots themselves kind of speak for themselves with future development, so.
Absolutely.
I agree. All the blocks and lots are listed for us. Yeah, let's just. Look at the overview.
Okay. Given that Mister Ludwig, we maybe just want to explain to the board just what the the presented on the plot, what the lots are now, what the new lots will be.
Sure, Mister McGuire, if you can bring the plat onto the screen, I do not have a copy readily available. Because I'm right now and not in my office, but the.
I can share one moment, sir.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Just take me one second. All right, can you see my screen?
Not yet, man.
No.
Okay, one moment. Screen one. There you go.
Absolutely. So as you can see, the property consisted of numerous small lots that fronted on various streets throughout the. The project area. We are proposing to consolidate these lots into what's essentially going to be one lot. So it's going to be designated as eighty one oh two lot one point zero one. As Mister McGuire stated earlier, Cook Street and Hoboken were previously vacated by ordinance from the town. With that, we are extending the right of way of Oakland Avenue. It's going to be a variable width, but it's going to tie into the other roads and allow for a larger road to be constructed. We're also extending Central Avenue from east to west, as you can see, to go through and give another egress way to Newark Avenue. Again, all of these lots are being consolidated. We're only creating one lot when it's all said and done. We're dedicating two, one, we're dedicating one right of way and expanding Oakland Avenue's right of way. Hoboken and Cook were already vacated before we, before I had taken on this project.
Mister Ludwig, if you could generally tell us where the building. Is going to be.
Mister McGuire, unfortunately, I.
I, yeah, I think I could, I think I could answer that. You're right. Essentially, the building will take up everything that's, for the most part, everything that is. That is the center lot, which is the proposed block eighty one oh two lot point one oh one. And in the, in the original. Section thirty one presentation, I I don't know if we have a copy of the actual. Elevation of the building tonight, but it would have shown that the building stretches across the whole lot. Essentially, the the. Courthouse building is in the Newark Avenue side, there is then going to be some parking that stretches on to. What is now the existing lot number one, block sixty seven oh two. And Hoboken Avenue, there will be a, I guess, a bridge way going across the old portion of Hoboken Avenue that's been vacated. And that will connect to the garage and to some other additional office space that's there.
That was my recollection from the section thirty one.
Chairman, if I may, I I just wanted to point out that we have David Hodge.
I'm sorry, I thought you were going to provide testimony.
No, no, I just wanted to let you know that I have David Hodge, who's the architect of record. He is present at the meeting. If you wanted to pull him in to be a panelist, he's available to answer questions in terms of the construction of the building.
Necessarily think we do. I don't think it really pertains to a consolidation of lots. That's really all we're looking at tonight. We've already seen the section thirty one. Unless, you know, any commissioners have any questions?
Chairman, I think it's pretty clear. Obviously, the building is going to sit on all of those lots, so we need to vacate those streets, cook and. Hoboken in order to have the building sit on the newly created land area. Based on what we saw of the section thirty one.
Sure, yeah, we've already approved the section thirty one, so yeah, let's just stick to the consolidation.
Right, and then just as, also just so, the reason we're asking for the three lots to to do the subdivision in three lots. The new portion of Central Avenue and the expansion of the of the other will be done later on. So that was actually a request that came from your tax department. Mister Tolosa asked if we could. Set them up now as as separate lots, temporary lots. And the reason being, he couldn't consolidate all the lots together because some of these lots, as you'll see from the map. Cut through currently existing lots, so he could not just say consolidate few of the lots and leave some out for the streets because they cut through the existing lots. So that's the reason we're asking for the the board to approve it as three, a permanent lot and then two temporary lots.
Sure, understood. Okay, with that, nobody else has any questions? All right, thank you, counsel. Let's open it up for public comment now. I'm sorry, did somebody?
I was just going to ask before we go to public comment if the applicant just put on the record the work they've done with Jersey City Engineering on. The design of the roads and the timeline for the completion of of those widening of the road segment and the new portion of Central Ave.
I think probably Mister Drummler, who's here from the administrator's office, the county administrator, probably best to answer that. We can bring him on.
I see him on the screen. There you go.
Hi Dave, I'm just gonna swear you in, okay? If you could raise your right hand.
Sure thing.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do swear.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, my name is David B. Drummler, D R U M E L E R.
Thank you.
And counsel, we are not qualifying Mister Drummler as an expert witness, correct?
Uh, no, the he'll testimony will just be basically to the actions that have been taken between the county and the and the city.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mister Drummler.
Um, yes, our engineering office has worked with Jersey City's engineering office to coordinate the construction of these roads. To the Jersey City standards. We have constructed Central Avenue. It is complete. With the exception of the final asphalt coat, which we won't be putting on until the courthouse is. Finished being constructed as we thought that that would give Jersey City the best road structure when they receive the roads back. Because all the cuts that we make during construction will be covered completely and will have a nice uniform road surface. With very fine aggregate as a final top coat and they will be striped according to. Both what we talked about planning and as well as what Jersey City Engineering is requesting. Presently, Oakland is also widened. To the point of what's, what was anticipated in the twenty sixteen master plan. And we're waiting for final utilities to pull the rest of the. The poles out of there. And then again, once construction of courthouse is completed, it'll get a final coat. Striping pursuant to city engineering and we should have two brand new roads that now carry traffic in both directions.
Okay, sounds great. Matt, you're satisfied with that?
Yep, thank you, Mister Drummer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so if anybody from the public wants to comment, please raise your hand. Once again, if you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Mister Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public.
Second in.
Okay. Second, public is closed. Matt, do you have anything else you want to add?
I'll just put on the record the memo that was dated August fifth, twenty twenty one. Prepared by by me to the to the commissioners, also distributed to Mister McGuire. And I just, there are three conditions recommended should the board make a motion to approve this application. I'd just like to ask if the applicant had time to review those and if they agree to those conditions.
Yes, that's fine. We're agreed.
Okay, with that, staff recommends approval. If you have any other questions, I'm here.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two one dash zero three nine is presented to the board tonight.
Second it. Motion made and seconded.
On a motion to approve with conditions, Commissioner Gonzalez.
I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I.
Commissioner Torres.
I.
Commissioner Allen.
I.
Commissioner Horton.
I.
Commissioner Desai.
Only one thing that sent to Avenue, the extension. It's only one way, so it shouldn't, they should make it two way, but I'm going to say I.
And Commissioner Chairman Langston.
I.
Motion carries all in favor on a motion to improve with conditions. Motion carries all in favor on a motion to improve with conditions.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, let's move on to item fourteen, case P one dash zero five one. It's an administrative amendment for address sixteen, three twenty-five, three twenty-six, fifteenth street, Monmouth Street and fifteenth street and two thirty-nine Cole Street.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tom Lean and Connell Foley here on behalf of the applicant. As was stated, this is an administrative amendment to a previously approved site plan amendment, a site plan approval. I do not think this did require notice, however, as a belt and suspenders, I did provide one, and I just want to make sure that counsel received my affidavit.
Thank you, counsel. I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at three sixteen, three twenty-five, three twenty-six, fifteenth street, Monmouth Street, fifteenth street, and two thirty-nine Cole. All does appear to be in order. And jurisdiction is proper before the board. Chairman, I just want to double check that. To see. That sounds like it may be close to where I have the continued conflict. Just bear with me.
While you're looking, Santo, I just want to ask Mr. Lean. Is the belt and suspenders comment, is that something that floats around the Connell Foley office often? That's the second time I've heard that.
I, I, it must have been Mr. Harrington who provided that, and it's probably where I picked it up.
I actually cannot believe that it's only the second time you've, might have heard that comment.
For sure. It is, but it's, it's been, I think it was last meeting, so.
You know, I was taught by the best, Chairman.
Santo.
You wear belts and suspenders, Chairman.
No, I do not.
Santo, this doesn't extend further south than the.
No, it's further.
Seventy-eight, yes, I think.
I'm okay. Thanks, Matt.
Okay, let's continue then.
Okay, thank you, counsel. This is a project that I'm sure the board is, is very familiar with. This is a four-phase development consisting of three towers and the rehabilitation of the existing factory. Just to give you a little perspective, it is bounded by Monmouth Street to the west, Cole Street to the east, Fourteenth Street to the south, and Sixteenth Street to the north. Phase one of this project is already under construction and is nearing completion. We are here tonight to ask for a change in the previously approved phasing schedule. The redevelopment plan gives the power to the board to dictate the, the manner and timing of the delivery of the phases for this project. Previously, phase two was an additional new construction tower to be built behind the, the structure that is currently under construction. We are now asking that we change that to make phase two, the rehabilitation of the existing warehouse at the corner of Sixteenth and Coles. The community benefits that were approved to be delivered as part of phase two will also be delivered at the same time as that rehabilitation. So the only thing that's really changing here is the construction on the actual site. The community, the required community benefits are not in any way changing as far as timing and delivery to the city. If you want me to go through what those benefits are, I do have Jeffrey Reeves, who is our project engineer. He is available, Matt. I don't know if you have added him as a panelist? Okay, and it's up to the board whether they want to go through those again.
I don't necessarily have any questions as long as, you know, the, the community benefits are still provided with the next phase. Anybody else? Any questions?
No.
I'm the same, I feel the same way as the chairman. Obviously, the chairman just said that the community, I didn't connect to this face. I'm okay.
All right, we do appreciate Mr. Reeves joining for tonight, but, yeah, I think we're okay with, you know, just hearing that as an administrative amendment with no other testimony.
Yeah, and so the board is aware Matt was provided with an updated phasing schedule.
And you reviewed that?
We just lost Tom's audio. He's still talking. One second. Tom, can you just repeat that second half of that? You cut out.
I don't think he's hearing us.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I dropped off there for a second.
Well, I'll just chime in. So I think he was leading into that he's, that the applicant worked with staff regarding the adjustments to the phasing they're doing. The, the community benefits that are going to remain as part of phase two aren't significantly changing. They are including some of the roads that are probably furthest away from the building that they're now calling phase two. But that was all, that was seen as crucial to, to really delivering the, the main phase one community benefit, which was the, which is going to be a police precinct. So there's some roads that are going to facilitate their access in addition to roads that are going to be in and around the phase two building. Staff's in agreement with these changes and leaves it to the board to, to review them and approve them.
Okay, thanks, Matt. All right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
No public, I move to close the public.
Seconded.
A motion is made and seconded for, to close public. We are closed, and Matt, you've given your.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate that all conditions of approval from past applications remain full force and effect. They're back here doing what's required of them. The, the zoning does defer to the board for the phasing of this project and the delivery of the community benefits. Again, staff's, staff's in agreement with these changes.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two one dash zero five one as presented to us tonight.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded for approval.
Okay, a motion to approve, Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton. Commissioner Dr. Desai. And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to item fifteen. It's case P two one dash zero six two is a site plan amendment for three New York Avenue.
Matt, you can also promote Rob Gioni.
Mr. Curly, are you able to unmute? All right, there you are. Oh.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John J. Curly. I represent the applicant on this matter. It is an application for amended final site plan approval. It requires notice to owners within two hundred feet. And since it is within two hundred feet of the city of Hoboken, it also required notice to those within the city of Hoboken. I believe that the affidavit of publication and the affidavit of service has been filed with the board.
Thank you, Mr. Curly. I am in receipt of your affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the amended site plan application at three dash twenty-five New York Avenue here in the city. I've had the opportunity to review it. All does appear to be in order. You can go ahead and mark that as A one for the record. And, Mr. Curly, if you could be direct in the testimony of your witnesses, it seems that the amendment is pretty clear to the board, so with that, please.
I have two witnesses. One is Andrew Missy from La Packer Associates, who is the civil engineer for the project. The other is Stuart Johnson of Benilin Moscow, who is the architect. I would call Mr. Missy at this point to give a brief overview of the changes, bearing in mind that preliminary site plan approval was granted in May two thousand nineteen. And final site plan approval was granted on January seventh, two thousand twenty. So this is the third time before the board, but with some significant changes on this final application. So I would like to call it this time Mr. Missy.
I see he's up here.
On the screen.
There we go. Mr. Missy, I just need to swear you in, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Andrew Missy, M I S S E Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Missy, good evening. We've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
And Chairman, just for the record, the notice was marked as A one.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Mr. Missy, could you give us a brief summary of the project and of the changes that are proposed from the last approval?
Yes, may I share the screen?
Yes.
What I put up on the screen is the, the site plan drawing, sheet two of nine of the plan set that was submitted. At the northwest corner of the site, we had previously located the sewer pump station. As a consequence of the, the grading at that location and certain other conditions, it became more advantageous to move that pump station to the southeast corner, which then allowed us to have a considerably enhanced landscaping in this northwest corner. And visually, that's more appealing from New York Avenue. Along the western way property line, the wall design has been finalized and resulted in eighty percent of that wall, wall being a gravity wall with a base of five feet or less. So that again is significant improvement aesthetically. And lastly, purely as a, as a utilitarian function, we redesigned the transformer area in this vicinity of the northeast corner to be more in keeping with public service input and some of the meetings that we had on site. Their electric transformers will be more accessible. That really is a, a summary of what, what's occurred on the civil plan without going into all the minutia.
All right, thank you, Mr. Missy. Yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The next witness I would like to call is Mr. Stuart Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you could, just state and spell your name, please.
Sure. Stuart Johnson, S T U A R T, last name Johnson, J O H N S O N.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, good evening. Your license is current tonight as an architect?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you. It's great to be back in front of this board. I'm gonna share my screen here. So as previously noted, this applicant has received, previously received preliminary and major site plan approvals for a new multifamily, a new multifamily apartment community consisting of a six and eight-story building totaling three hundred and forty residential apartment units with a hundred and seventy-one structured parking spaces on site. The amended site plan application being considered before this board this evening considers a reduction in total unit count to three hundred and thirty-six dwelling units. So it's a reduction of four dwelling units total for the project and a revised unit mix. And this is due to really the time that has elapsed between when we last received major site plan approval and current market conditions today, looking at market studies and a revision and a, you know, revision to the unit mix being proposed for the project as well as a revision and update to some of the residential amenities and landscape architecture layout. So I'd very quickly like to walk the board through those revisions. So again, the revised plans being considered before the board this evening are for three hundred and thirty-six new residential apartment units, a reduction of four units as noted. We've provided here a before and after analysis. The analysis on the left was the unit mix chart and the building square footage that was previously approved. On the right is the new, and we've rev clouded what has changed, and this is what was submitted to the board. So specifically, the revised drawings here propose fifty studio units, which is one less studio unit from that which was previously approved. One hundred and sixty-nine one-bedroom units, which are three more one-bedroom units from that which was previously approved. One hundred and ten two-bedroom units, which is thirteen less two-bedroom units from that which was previously approved. And three, and seven new three-bedroom market rate units, which are seven new three-bedroom units from that which was previously approved. Which, which really those three bedroom units, we have one per level, and that's really just responding to market conditions and what we're seeing, the desire to have an additional room for a home office, for a Peloton studio, a, a guest bedroom, and really, you know, additional increase in size. So to highlight that, there are four less dwelling units total. And in regards to bedroom count, there are three less bedrooms for the project as you count the bedroom counts across that unit mix. The project provides for the same number of structured parking spaces, so there's still a hundred and seventy-one total structured parking spaces. There's no change there. We actually have one modification of one less compact parking space and one more standard parking space. We've also denoted on the plan twenty-five electrical vehicle charging spaces, which are in this, this vicinity of the plan as denoted with the EV charging symbol and as highlighted with this rev cloud. Mr. Missy made reference here in the ground floor and the site plan to the relocation of the pump station for the project. It was previously located here within proximity to the New York Avenue frontage. We've relocated that to the southeastern corner of the site, so it's generally cons, screened from public view, so arguably much better site design and engineering design. The other modifications to the ground floor of the building here was a minor modification to the location of the entry door to the secondary residential lobby with frontage on New York Avenue. It shifted slightly to the right. But the, the exterior glazing and storefront window design remains the same. The exterior facade remains substantially the same other than fixed, fixed storefront windows becoming operable for that new door location and where the operable doors previously located become fixed. So the percentage of exterior glazing there in the ground floor remain the same, and that works well with the modified landscape, landscape architectural design at the streetscape and with the transformer and utility layout as Mr. Missy previously highlighted. The footprint of the building as shown here on the ground floor and as it was vertically in the building substantially remains the same. So the exterior wall location and articulation as that which was previously approved on the left substantially remains the same. The overall gross building square footage for the project has increased by approximately eighty-nine hundred square feet. And the footprint has increased by that nine hundred square feet on this ground floor, just with subtle, subtle undulations of working out of the engineering of the building, but substantially remains the same. I will note that the project is located in the R three multifamily. I will note that the project is located in the R-three multifamily mid-rise zoning district, as well as located within the Palisades Preservation Overlay District. As previously approved, the project complies with the books, the bulk zoning ordinance in regards to building height and setbacks, as well as design standards of the exterior facades. The revised application here also complies with the requirements of the PPOD or Palisade Preservation Overlay District, specifically in regards to the permitted height as the building with the building's proximity to the face of the Palisades Cliff. As we move vertically in the building, the other substantial change, other than the reduction of units and unit mix, is at the second floor level, which is the main residential level of the project. We've updated and revised the interior residential amenity layout. It's generally consistent with the design intent of that which was previously approved, but we further refine the programmatic layout of the fitness center, the clubroom, the leasing management office as as they're located interior to the building. We have increased the residential amenity square footage on this floor by approximately two thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven square feet, so just under three thousand square feet. And that's all internal to the courtyard. So you can see here where at the cafe lounge space and at the fitness center and the the main residential lobby lounge, we've bumped out interior to the courtyard slightly by a few feet. And then the one-story breezeway structure connecting the eastern and western side of the ground floor here, we have increased that square footage slightly here in the north-south direction with the quiet study coworking zone, the business center and the residential lounge. And again, that's really in line with current market conditions and demands for multifamily housing. In line with that, we've also updated the the active and passive landscape residential amenities interior to the courtyard. You can see the reorientation of the pool in a east-west direction as opposed to the north-south here and just a refinement of the location of the exterior dining and grilling areas interior to that courtyard, but substantially consistent with that which was previously approved. As we move vertically in the building, levels three through eight again are generally consistent with that which was previously approved, other than the minor modifications to the unit mix that I had noted previously. And then that brings us vertically to the uppermost level of the building. Again, the building steps from six to eight stories as previously approved to complies with the Palisades with the PPOD requirements in regards to the proposed building height. So the other modification I'd like to note here is at the rooftop area. We have expanded the interior amenity space at the rooftop. It has increased by approximately one thousand ninety-nine square feet. So you can see here, previously, we had a rooftop vestibule area that provided a small lounge space and access to a passive outdoor recreation area. On the right-hand side, you can see that we've added a men's and women's single occupancy bathroom at this level, a small study off of that lounge lobby space and access then to outdoor dining and passive recreation. The other point to note is that we have added a rooftop dog run area, which is a smart design here for residents of this community along that rooftop amenity deck. Again, the the proposed design here complies with the overall building height permitted, as well as the permitted uses for the project. If we advance the slide here, this is sheet A oh eight, and this is a building section and height diagram. This, there was no change to this. So again, this just demonstrates how the building complies with the permitted building height of eight stories. It also shows how the building height and massing of the building complies with that of the PPOD and specifically the offset, the four hundred and fifty off, the four hundred and fifty-foot offset requirement from the cliff face itself, limiting the height of any building, a piece of the building or apparatus or mechanical equipment. So really, no change there. And lastly, that brings us to the exterior building facades. Substantially, no change to the exterior building facades are being proposed, other than the minor modification. And what we've provided here are again other before and after. So A zero nine point one, where the previously approved building elevations, advancing the slide to A zero nine point two, these are the revised building elevations. We've rev clouded anything that has been updated. So again, minor modification to the relocation of the secondary residential lobby entrance here on the ground floor fronting New York Avenue. But you can see that the exterior building materials, percentage of building materials are consistent with that which was previously approved. There was an additional egress door access off the main residential lobby here, which was added to the side elevation. Advancing to the other two exterior building elevations, this is, these were the two elevations previously approved. And then the revised elevations here, again, really the only update is that expansion of the rooftop amenity area interior to the building. You can see that the expansion of about a thousand square feet, plus or minus. The only change or update to building materials were that at the typical residential units, previously, we had called that for aluminum, you know, architectural aluminum windows at the typical residential window design. These have now been updated to reflect, accurately reflect the design intent to be aluminum clad wood windows. So aesthetically, it provides a similar and comparable finish to that which was previously proposed with an aluminum exterior cladding. The proportion of the windows, as shown here, has have not changed. The opening of the windows have not changed. And we have those standard details representing that. So with that, that concludes my architectural testimony. So as you can see, really minor modifications, other than the reduction of unit count, the modification to the unit mix, the inclusion of the seven new three-bedroom market rate units, and then the minor modifications noted to the residential amenity spaces. And then, obviously, the exterior building elevation designs that correlate with those building plan changes that were noted.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The only question I do have is on the electric vehicle charging parking spaces.
Sure.
Are those, I mean, obviously, the parking spaces are for rental or for sale to the tenants of the building. How are the electric vehicle spots handled? Does someone have to show proof that they own an electrical vehicle? Are those spots
Sure.
also deeded to the units? Or, you know, are those charging spots just available to anyone with an electric car that has a spot somewhere else in the garage?
Sure, that's a great comment. So so typically, the EV charging spaces are managed by a third-party company. One of the companies out there who controls a lot of the market sector is called ChargePoint. And residents of this building who had an EV vehicle or had an electric vehicle would set up an account. It's no different than setting up an EZ Pass account. And you can actually reserve charging spaces. So I can, you know, if I had a, you know, if I had an electric vehicle, I can actually reserve for an overnight charge or for an afternoon charge, a Saturday charge or Sunday charge. So there's twenty-five spaces there, and that actually monitors the usage. So the residents of this community would be, you know, would be billed for the electric usage, you know, for the amount of kilowatts that they use for a short-term or long-term charge of those vehicles. But that sort of, that's, you know, that's industry standard, what we're seeing in the market.
Okay, so the spots technically aren't going to be deeded to a certain unit, correct?
Not typically, no.
Okay, so those are almost open spots, so you know, I'm almost considering that a reduction in the the parking. You understand what I mean, that the spots are more fluid. People will come
Sure.
into those spots. It's not that they're dedicated spots for certain vehicles, correct?
Right. Well, what I would say is that, you know, this is a managed, this is a managed event. So, you know, obviously, until demand is there, these would be assigned to units. So if day one at lease up, there's only five electrical vehicles in in the parking garage, these would be assigned to a unit. But, you know, this is a controlled by building management, so they know how many residents have electrical vehicle spaces, what the demand is. We have also smartly designed the infrastructure in place here to add additional spaces over time if tenant demand is there, right? So the infrastructure is in place, and we've designed the electrical conduit and transformers to accommodate, you know, to accommodate more than twenty-five spaces as that demand to technology increases.
Okay, that's that's great. That's good to hear. Yeah, that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Curly, anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Langston, one quick question that just came up when you were changing the screen.
Sure.
On those electric parking spaces, are any of those electric parking spaces ended up? They looked all the same to me.
So yes, the yes, the short answer is that we would have to provide accessible electric vehicle charging spaces. The governor actually recently signed a new law in action that some of you may be aware of, actually requiring a certain percentage of EV charging spaces coming online with all new site plan applications. They're called make-ready spaces, so a certain percentage need to be brought online initially, and then the remainder of the spaces are brought online in years following the CO of the building. But a percentage of those spaces are required to be accessible EV charging spaces, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Curly, I do see someone with their hand raised. Do they have testimony for us? Okay, I'm gonna
Oh, I don't see that.
Was Mr. Gano? I hope I'm pressing the name right.
Well, close enough, and I apologize. I lifted my hand earlier. I'm all good.
Okay, no problem. All right. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. And if you were calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand for this application. Anybody from public?
Do you try to like to make a motion to close the public?
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Mallory, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I think the changes are pretty straightforward. We would just ask that any of the conditions of approval under the original final site plan approval be upheld with the amendment.
Okay, counsel, you're okay with that?
That's acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Do you try, I'd like to make a motion then to approve case P two, one, dash, zero, six, two, as presented to the board tonight.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
I do like those charging stations in the parking lot, and I would say aye.
Commissioner Horton?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to item sixteen, is case P two, zero, dash, zero, nine, zero, is a minor subdivision, preliminary and final major site plan for one fifty Vroom Street. Mr. Grant, are you there? We can hear you.
Okay. It requested a video, and I said yes, but I don't know what.
Do you have a manual thing that covers your? No, it doesn't look like that's a manual problem. I'm going to stop your video and then start it again. One second. It looks gray, which means that there must be a technical issue. It's not black. I don't know. Does the board want to proceed?
Yeah, I don't understand why. I can see everybody on the board.
Yeah, I can, I can barely hear you, Mr. Grant.
Is that better?
No, we have no change.
Mr. Grant, do you have another device that you can?
I'm on a computer. I could try my phone, I suppose.
Just might work, Mr. Grant.
Okay, hold on. Sorry.
When you call in, just raise your hand by pressing, what is it, star nine or six? Chris, I always forget. Do you remember?
It's, I'm sorry. Star nine when you raise your
You are seen.
Oh, look at that.
Apologize. I don't know why my computer is not working.
One moment. I'm gonna
You've got computer there.
I think that should be
All right. I think we should probably be okay now. Yes.
Yeah, we got you.
Floor is yours.
Are we all good? I apologize.
Yeah, we have you.
We're good. You're on, Mr. Grant.
Can you hear us, Mr. Grant? Mr. Grant, nod if you can hear us.
Take that as a no.
I'll take that as a no also.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Can you hear us?
I'm here. Can you hear me, anybody?
Yes.
He can't hear us.
Ken, can you hear us? I don't know the sign language for that.
It's not really good sign language.
What was that, Chairman?
My sign language. I'm sorry.
Mr. Grant, I think if you tapped the screen, you should get some icons that'll let you unmute your phone, perhaps.
I'm thinking
Can anyone hear me?
We can hear you, Mr. Grant. I don't think you can hear us.
I think the volume on his device is down.
I think you're right, Matt, but I can't explain that to him.
I'm gonna write it on a piece of paper and show it to
Let's say, open up notepad and write it and share your screens.
Oh, it's a
We're trying to reach him through his cell phone, but I don't know if that will
Probably what he's on.
Yeah.
Chairman, perhaps we should go to the next application.
There we go. There we go. Hello?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, yes.
Great.
Hi, folks.
I apologize. I don't
You're good?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Hey, Mr. Grant, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. We're here on one fifty Vroom Street on a preliminary in my, excuse me, preliminary and final major site plan approval with approval of bulk C deviations for subdivision of forty-five, seventy forty-five C two. There are several minimal variances involved concerning minimum lot depth, depth, maximum building height and minimum front setback. These will be identified and discussed by my experts who have been before this board on several occasions. We have Russ Badnar as architect, who's obviously appeared before this board on several, many occasions, as well as Mr. Charles Hite from Dresner Robin. We will start with my architect, Russ Badnar. Uh, we will start with my architect, Russ Bodnar. Chairman, for purposes of the record, uh, you may recall that we had a notice issue at the last hearing that the applicant was at. The issue dealing with the lack of the Zoom link in the notice. The applicant has renoticed the application for tonight's hearing. All does appear to be in order. We're gonna mark that as A one for the record. Your decision is before the board.
Okay.
Mr. Bodnar, we can get you sworn in and accepted in your field, please.
You're trying to give testimony tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, my name is Russell, last name Bodnar, B O D N A R. I resided fifty-two Long Hill Road in Long Valley, New Jersey. I've been a licensed architect since nineteen ninety, and I've been in my own business since nineteen ninety-seven, and I've appeared before this board several times.
And Mr. Bodnar, your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you. Mr. Bodnar, we have, uh, a sixteen unit, uh, application here with eight one bedrooms for uh, four one bedrooms with a study and four two-bedroom units with two commercial spaces. Will you bring the board through the whole process as we've discussed on several occasions?
Ye- yes, I will. Um, if you can be sharing screen capabilities, since I don't have that here yet. Well, I did for Share screen.
Mr. Bodnar, we don't mark anything, obviously, that's been submitted. However, as things come up that were not submitted, if you could just identify them, and we will mark them in succession, A two, A three, et cetera, et cetera.
You can get that. It didn't do like it normally does. Try it again. Share the screen. I don't know why they didn't basic share here. Open system preference. Why they did that to me. Normally, this does not do this to me. Uh, somebody fooled with this. Are you kidding me tonight? Don't say anything here. Somebody, yeah, this is, I don't know why, of course, it's tonight. Of all nights, um.
At the center bottom of your screen, is there a share screen symbol?
Shared screen, and it comes up with allows them to share your screen. I say open preferences. The problem is, it's now on some demented things is general.
You have sharing abilities, so
I do. It just does not make me this second. Weird.
Do you want us to host your drawings?
Yeah, can you host my drawings? I go through them anyhow. I don't know why this thing just flaked out on me, but this is why. It's very odd. It says share a screen, but it does not do what it normally does. If you can just go to, uh, Z and go to Z and five to begin with, that would be, uh, that'd be the floor plan page.
One moment. Thank you.
Yeah, I hate to do that to you guys. Sorry about that, Matt. I don't know what's up with this computer. I share this computer with my family. That's half the problem.
Do you have roadblocks on the computer?
Yeah, they put roadblocks on this thing. It says share a screen, and it comes up with other crazy stuff, firewall and all kind of the stuff. I was like, I don't know what happened. You should never do that.
Wake the kids up. They'll fix it.
No, they're not even here. If they were here, I would wake them. I would beating on my daughter. We use this last.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen. One moment.
Thanks, Matt.
And these, the drawings that you wanted me to look at?
That's correct. This is Z and one. This is, uh, we can start here anyhow. Uh, you can see our locations off of Bergen Square, off of Vroom Street and, uh, Vroom Court, our little street be- behind our building. Um, so you can see that there. That's our location. We are in the twenty sixty zone of we are in zone, actually, twenty sixty redevelopment zone, and we are in zone eight of that. So we are, we have actually two lots, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Currently, there's a building residing on lot twenty-seven, and twenty-eight is a parking lot. In between our building, there is like a, a building that's gonna be knocked down. It's like a laundromat kind of thing that we're knocking down. That is just a one-story building. We are actually doing a little bit of changes, a little bit of subdivision modifications to our lots. Lot twenty-seven is gonna become smaller. It's going from five thousand it's going from five thousand six hundred and eighty-six square feet to four thousand two hundred and forty-seven square feet. Um, and our new lot, and our lot that we're using twenty-eight is going from three thousand seven hundred and ninety-two square feet to five thousand two hundred and thirteen square feet. Um, by doing this, although we still, we have a fifty by almost a hundred lot, we don't have a hundred lot still. We have a ninety-eight foot long lot, so we're looking for a deviation or variance on that lot size. Uh, as well as our other variants consist of, we are doing a five-story building. Um, our five-story building, we're allowed fifty-four feet. We have fifty-five foot six feet. I'm actually taking it from the lowest point, which means we are actually, um, lowest point on the sidewalk. Our sidewalk slopes down. So our building is at one point fifty, fifty-three feet and change, and it goes down. Our highest point is fifty-five foot six. So that's why we're asking for a one foot six, uh, variance there. Also, um, in this zone, we are required, we have a, we're allowed five stories, but in, we're allowed four stories with a ten-foot setback on our fifth story. Our building, we are not complying with that. Our building is only fifty feet deep if we consider uh, um, Vroom Street to be our front yard. So Vroom Street is our front yard. We only have fifty feet. We'll end up taking four, we only have a forty-foot wide building. It's kind of hard to kind of readjust our building on the upper levels for that. The building actually to the south of us, if, um, we can go down to, um, eleven, um, so, um, Z and eleven, you'll see like, oh, 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 I think it's the last one on there. For you. The, uh, go back up ones, Z and eight, actually, would have it. Z and eight, you can see our block frontage is there. Our building to the, um, actually to the, to the west of us is actually taller, and they're flatter, and they're right on the property line. Both those buildings to the left of us are, and our building to our right of us is a little, would be a little taller than us if we did have that weird setback. So we decided not to go with that setback. As you can see here, this is what our building, we're proposing our building to look like from the outside. We're doing brick facade with, uh, metal cladding on all the bays. We have little bay windows on that. So you can see that there. We have some, um, interesting little brick details going up along the building. We have some hatch style breaking going up, as well as we have a, uh, our series of our front, our first floor has, uh, two commercial spaces that we said, as well as, um, our lobby entrance from the, um, that street as well, our main street, Vroom Street entrance. If you go, this is our Vroom Court, um, uh, plan here. We actually have, um, a metal panel system on the upper level and brick facade on the first floor level. As you can see on the top, we have our stairhouse penthouses um, as well as our elevator, uh, penthouse on the roof. If we can go to Z and I think it's Z and four, I believe, has the floor plans. And that's, oh, one back, one, the N, the N, actually, Z and five, six, as our floor plans. We go back to Z and six. Sorry, guys. Trying to do this from memory. Z and six shows our two type of floor plans. One, we have our first floor plan, which shows the two commercial spaces and, uh, as well as the lobby and, um, our lobby, um, our lobby area with our two staircases, as well as the, uh, elevator. Um, as you can see between our buildings, there's a, um, thirty-four foot distance between our new building and our existing building. We are doing a shared courtyard. It's actually like a shared uh, rear yard situation where we kind of landscaped and did everything up. So both those buildings will share this as a shared product in terms of what they're, um, what they're allowed to use. So that's one of the amenities spaces in our building. Uh, we are also proposing sixteen bike parking spaces in this. We do have a trash room in this, uh, location, as well as uh, electrical room and gas meter storage area. I did notice one thing when I didn't, was listening to one of your other comments earlier. We did not provide, which I can actually easily do in the lobby area, a package room. Uh, we don't have a package room in this building, so I can provide one right where it says lobby, and I can rearrange that little area to provide a package area for our sixteen apartments. So I think that the condition on approval, we will, uh, put that on the final set of plans. I think that's a a good point that somebody else brought up, and we didn't have one on our, our drawing here as well. Um, and we, if we go to the upper level on our second floor plan through, uh, fifth floor plan, we have, uh, four different type of apartments. Uh, basically, we have two one bedrooms, and each bed, one bed, one of the one bedrooms is seven hundred and twenty square feet. The other one's seven hundred and fifty-six square feet. We have a two-bedroom apartment that's eleven hundred and twenty-five square feet and a one-bedroom study, which is, uh, ten thousand fifty-four square feet. So we, we brought this all the way up to, um, yeah, all five floors. We didn't do the setback, and we felt like we've cut the setback back. We would end up losing that, those two bedrooms and creating some kind of unusual building because we're losing kind of a strange way. And we're saying, okay, if that's our front yard, then, you know, it's our, it's kind of our short way, our short distance into our, into our building. If we went a long way, Vroom Court would be our front lawn, and we could, you know, and a kind of a weird way to do it as well with a ten-foot setback on Vroom Court, which is really just a kind of more of a paper-type street that really isn't being used by anybody other than two or three more lots down the street. So we decided to stay with, just bringing the building all the way up to the top. If you can go to Z and seven, we have a roof deck on, on our building. If you go to the following sheet, yeah. And the following sheet shows our roof deck. In our roof deck, we have five hundred and sixty-four square feet of roof decking. We also have a little a little, um, roof lobby area for handicap people to come out on and go on, onto each of the separate little locations. We have two different separate, like, um, roof terrace areas. We also are providing, uh, I believe it's, uh, roof trays. We have eight hundred and fifty-six square feet of roof trays, of green roofing trays we're providing on this project, as well as you can see, our, all our condensers and our generator, all our, all our equipment is put on this location and this level above the building. We did set our, our roof deck six feet from the parapet. So we are not, you know, with, we are compliant with that as well in terms of, I believe that was an item on the, uh, the zoning list. Being compliant with that. Um, other than that, uh, we're really only real variants again are the, the setback on the, uh, on the fifth floor, the ten feet, the one foot six, uh, variance for the, uh, height going from fifty-four feet to fifty-five foot six. And our other one is our rear yard setback, and I'm kind of weird with this rear yard setting. I'm having the problem with, we have two streets, so I'm saying, okay, if we consider Vroom Street, where I have no rear yard setback, but if we consider Vroom Court, we have a twenty-foot set, um, rear, uh, a twenty-foot rear setback to that building that has our shared space, which is actually thirty-four foot six. So like I said, we are tweaking the lots a little bit to make this building work. And like I said, my client owns both built, both projects, and both projects gotta be rentals, and he's keeping them for the, for the future. So these are both his buildings. He's keeping both the building that's on Bergen Avenue, as well as this building, and and he's making this all compliant with, um, that, 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 that area. So people can use from Bergen, the Bergen Avenue, people can use that, that that courtyard area between the building, and this building is able to use that. And even in some kind of strange way, the commercial space can actually access on to that that courtyard as well, and it actually brings you back out to the street. So if somebody was in the commercial space and what they, they did have something, since it is his rental, he can provide some kind of access there, and maybe somebody from, you know, can come and go from that location as well. If you're coming from the other building, and let's say there is a commercial space that somebody wants to go to, I don't know, let's say a bumping door or something, they can go in that entrance instead of the other entrance, you know, so it'll be more convenient for them. So I think that's pretty much the, um, the gist of it. I had the rendering, Matt. I don't know if you have that. I wish I could give that to you, but I can't. The shared, I don't know if you have that handy. Send it to you. Yeah, it'd be under
One moment. Do you have the file name?
Um, it would be under the other Vroom one that's not zoning, Vroom Street, the that one, the Vroom APP, that top, the top one, I believe. I think it's
Hmm, I don't believe so.
No, I don't have. I must have sent it to you guys, but I don't have. Sorry about the non-shared thing. I gotta really tell my daughter to stop messing with this computer. Ah, children.
That's okay. Let's, uh, let's move on. Um, the only question I have, Mr. Bodnar, is, uh, the condensers on the roof, are they screened in any way?
I don't really have a screen, but I can add screen to them. That's a, uh, you know, we do have a, we do have a fence around the we do have a fence around that, um, around our roof decking thing there. Well, we can also screen as well both ways from, from the roof deck, as well as from the neighbor to, from the neighborhood. You gotta remember, uh, we have a parapet wall. I have an entire building has a parapet wall around it. That's four feet tall, minimum. I always do that, just in case somebody's on the roof deck, somehow they jump over the railing. At least they don't jump over the, off the, off the, the roof itself. I consider it a double safety factor.
Tim, what do you think about that for, uh, for screening on the mechanicals? Is that required there?
I don't believe it is, but I think it's a good idea. I, I felt like it wasn't going to be a, uh, an issue.
Okay, I mean, if you don't think it's an issue, it's not an issue. Uh, yeah, as long as, you know, a sightline doesn't, uh, enter into that area, I'm fine.
I don't believe there will be. You gotta remember, the big, the former building also has the elevate, the stair tower that goes up to that level. So that kind of blocks it if you were like, looking across the street from us. And I don't know, if you're looking from east and west, our elevator kind of blocks it from the the western approach a little bit, some of that area, as well as that parapet. So I think, uh,
Okay.
Be fine there as well.
Right. Yeah, I'm satisfied with that then. And, um, yeah, I, I do think the package room is a great idea.
Yeah, I, I heard that earlier.
Building at this point should have one. Okay, I have no other questions. Anybody else for Mr. Bodnar? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the next witness will be Mr. Charles Height from Dresner Robin.
Whoa.
You swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H E Y D T.
Thank you.
Mr. Height, um, as you know, we have three variants as part of this subdivision. It's, this, this property is in the Journal Square redevelopment plan. Would you kindly walk us through the three minor variances that are part of this application?
And I'd be happy to. I, I wanna let the board know, um, Chris.
In terms of, yeah, do I qualify him? Because I've been here so many times. I, I didn't wanna waste any time, but if you want it, yeah.
Is your license current tonight, Mr. Height?
It, it is, yes, as a professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Uh, Mr. Grant, I'd be happy to walk the board through. I, I did have photos that I thought would be helpful for the board, just to kind of see the full progression of current, current conditions on the site to what we're proposing.
Hopefully, you can share better than
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try. I don't know.
We need to mark these, Mr. Height?
I, I do believe so. Um, I, I can't remember exactly if they were submitted ahead, um, but I
Mark it. We're up to A two?
Yeah, I don't think they were submitted.
Okay.
And then if you could just submit those at the end of the hearing, Mr. Height?
Yes, will do.
Thank you.
Um, so this is, uh, if you had a chance to look at the survey or visit the property, this is actually the portion of the property that, um, is nearest, uh, Vroom Court. Um, so we're viewing from Vroom Street, looking north. You see the parking area internal to the lot and that one-story yellow, uh, brick building that Mr. Bodnar had referenced, that's to be demolished. Um, this is another angle of that parking area. Um, so it's certainly underutilized land in terms of Journal Square redevelopment and, uh, Zone Eight. I did also want to mention a portion of this overall property because we are, are dealing with, uh, redistribution, um, and subdivision is block twenty-seven, which is in the preservation zone. Uh, so this building is not being altered. Um, it's in really great shape. Uh, it does front on to Bergen Avenue. Um, and it's obviously in the, the, as I mentioned, Zone Six. Um, so that's to be preserved, um, as part of this project. Uh, this is a rear of that, um, structure. So there's a, there's a small one-story portion of this building to be remained, but this, this um, add-on, I believe, is, is gonna be, uh, renovated to make way for the, the park between the two primary structures. Um, just to call out for reference, uh, we do have some building step-back variances in a minor building height, a bulk uh, a bulk deviation in building height. These are adjacent, um, structures within the immediate proximity. So here we have a five-story structure. Um, we're just calling this out because We're just calling this out because there is no five and six-story structure. There is no step backs on these buildings. So they do have that older traditional block massing. And here you find on lot seventy-three across from room street. Again, these are, these are literally within two hundred feet of the subject property, just to give you a feel of the existing structures. So one of the things we did want to call out was initially, the subdivision affecting Zone Six is technically a deviation in Zone Six. You're not allowed to subdivide because it's a preservation district. So here we are subdividing. We do want to raise that as a deviation. Clearly, the intent here is to just redistribute the land and accommodate a longer lot for lot twenty-seven or lot twenty-eight, I should say. And then obviously coming with the park that's going to be shared between both lots. So it's a really efficient design here, having that rear yard space between the two buildings that's going to serve both buildings, can be activated, as Mr. Bodner said, with the commercial space, which is a really nice touch. And we saw the designs from the plans. So that that is a deviation. Another aspect of the deviation is lot depth. So a minimum of one hundred feet is required for lot twenty, twenty-eight, where one foot shy. And that was the goal, to try and get to a hundred feet. So we're one foot shy there, which in my opinion is the minimalist. Lot twenty-seven, it's similar. What's being proposed is twenty-seven feet with that redistribution, the shifted lot line. Both of these lots have wider than required lot widths. So the lot areas are well sufficient, well north of the minimum standard. And they're large enough to accommodate, obviously, the existing structure as well as the proposed structure. So in in overall effect, I don't think there's any sort of detriment or impairment of the zone plan because we do have a very reasonably sized lot set approximately four, five thousand square feet. The variance is related to the building height. I wanted to pull up an elevation just to hone in on this. We are over the maximum permitted by one foot, one foot and a half. So you could identify this as also the minimalist standard in terms of the relief being sought. But I just wanted to highlight for the board, and I'll share my screen again, on the elevation on the plans. A few things that we like to look for is that we are still compliant with the ground floor, having a twelve-foot floor-to-ceiling height. So we have that pronounced space that the plan calls for. And then the minimum floor-to-ceiling heights on the residential floors above are nine feet. So we're still code-compliant with the redevelopment plan with the minimum floor-to-ceiling heights being nine feet. And the overall height puts us at fifty-five and a half, which is greater than what's permitted. At the, at the top, what I think is is useful in terms of a design here, we have these projections of the parapits that break up that roof line. So there are nice touches, a little modern touch to that square massing. But again, it's variable and it also incorporates the higher parapet for the stair and stair bulkhead. So it all works together in terms of these vertical elements of the facade. So that's with respect to the building height. With respect to the two setback deviations, I'll just flip quickly to plan view. The, this, this is, this would be a good, good plan, I guess. You're seeing the interior proposed courtyard. Room court is actually the front yard for this property because, as Mr. Bodner said, it is a corner property, room street and room court, but room court is a narrow width at fifty feet, eight inches. So the front yard step-back should be occurring here where we aren't proposing one. So ten feet is required. We did discuss this in the layouts. We're trying to have an appropriately sized footprint. I think that was part of the Mr. Bodner's testimony. Taking out the ten feet from these units would would change the layout from a lot of the vertical efficiency with the fourth below. So we're proposing a full fourth plan for, fulfill your fifth floor plan with respect to this front yard area along room court. As I mentioned earlier, all the other buildings around do have a full floor plan. They're all block massing, so it's consistent with that. With respect to the rear yard, again, it's it's similar. What's required is a thirty-foot step-back. What's being proposed is eighteen feet, I believe, to be technical. But or twenty feet in terms of the rear yard line. But we also are benefiting from the concept of the shared rear yard open space for both properties. So that adds an additional fourteen feet, eight inches or six inches. So while we're deficient when you measure from the building line, we certainly have the additional separation of building. It's approximately thirty-five feet from building edge to building edge on these upper stories. So we think we're meeting the intent there by by creating some separation in the internal area. And certainly the this idea that the shared courtyard is a benefit at the ground level. Those are the deviations being requested tonight. I don't believe there's any sort of substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. We're respecting Zone Six with the preservation. Activating this rear yard area, converting it from a parking lot is only a benefit to the project as a whole in the neighborhood. And then with with respect to the general welfare, it's it's the same theme. This this property is severely underutilized. Parking lots in downtown Jersey, Journal Square in Jersey City are are not necessarily needed. Where we're in that Bergen Square area, this this property twenty-seven does front on to Bergen Square. So activating this area, I do really like the commercial use fronting on to the inner inner property. It really will activate the space as a as a neighborhood amenity. So that's, that's a benefit in my mind. And I think that's everything I wanted to cover. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or if there's anything else I need to fill in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Height. I don't know if this would actually fall under a question for you or not. I I like the share, shared courtyard idea. My only questions would be, does that require some kind of easement? I know it's the same property owner currently, but should there be a shared easement between those two lots?
In my experience, yes, I think that should be part of the application here because as you mentioned, if if one gets sold, we're presenting this as a benefit for both properties, which that could happen down down the road. So that that shouldn't be an issue now, given that it's the same owner.
Okay.
But I I do defer if there's any other legal issues to Mr. Grant.
Okay, yeah, that's my only question. Anybody else, anything for Mr. Height?
I have a question with the height of my shore. Overall, the overall height of the building, you say it's fifty-five or six. And the plan, we go by the overall height as the overall height of the how many floors it is or of the height of the building. Because then it becomes, it's not really fifty-five, six, it's really sixty-seven feet or six.
So I'd be happy to clarify that. There's two requirements here, building stories in stories and in feet. So we comply with the stories, five stories is permitted. In terms of building, building feet, we're measuring from grade to the roof deck. What you probably are looking at is the overall reference to the top of the staircase bulkhead, which is that sixty
Yes, yes.
foot dimension. So we don't necessarily count that. That has its own restrictions in terms of height, which we comply with. So we're we're measuring to the roof deck below that, which is the fifty-five and a half.
Yeah, I was just to keep my mind, I was just sure if it was a question I had from Matt.
On the elevation.
But yes, thanks for clearing it up. Stand out. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Eddie. Anybody else for Mr. Height? Okay, thank you, Mr. Height.
My pleasure.
Counsel, anything else?
He's in the audience.
How did that happen?
Go ahead and open up the public chairman.
Okay, I do want to address that that easement then after after public. So I'm going to open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public then wants to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hand if you're calling in or just raise your hand.
Anybody? We can promote Mr. Grant again.
You should be here.
I'm here, I'm here. I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Grant, Mr. Grant, we're bringing up members of the public if they're there. Yes, yes, thank you. Vice Chairman, I don't see any, but.
Let's call it one more time. Once again, anybody from public, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in and you'd like to comment, please press star nine to raise your hands.
Mr. Chair, I don't see any public. I move to close the public.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Mr. Grant, if we could address real quick that easement. You know, in the event that one of these properties are sold, I know it's the same applicant that owns both properties right now.
Yes.
I I do think there should be an easement granted so that that courtyard would stay in place.
I concur. That's not a problem. We can make that as part of the approval.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Tim, do you have anything you want to add?
Just that the variance is requested or minor. Charles did a good job of covering a lot of that. Also that the the shared space provided, I think, adds a nice element to the street. And we're all planning his favorite project. And that Mr. Grant and I will work together to make sure that there is agreement for an easement in the
All right.
That's correct.
And Mr. Grant, we also do have a condition on a package room in that lobby.
That's also part of the approval. I have no problem with that.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion then to approve case P two zero dash zero nine zero.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez. Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Horton.
I'm an I, I just also want to say that it looks like they're a great place. I think it's going to improve the area a lot and there's been a lot of issues in that area. So I'm happy to see some new development going there.
Thank you. Commissioner, Dr. Desai. Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Chairman Langston.
Hi.
All in favor, motion passes with staff conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, do you need a break or do you want to roll through?
The next one looks like it should be short, right?
I would assume.
More than two minutes, Mr. Lee.
Real quick, Chairman.
Real quick, Chairman, just a quick question for Mr. Grant. Just my own adification. Do you know the timeframe of when construction would start?
Not for several months, that's for sure. We have some, you know, loose ends to take care of and, you know, find always the architectural. So it wouldn't be until either the end of the year or beginning of next year realistically.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you.
All right, so let's call item seventeen is case P two one dash zero seven four is a one-year extension for one sixty-seven to one sixty-nine Baldwin Avenue and forty-four to forty-eight New Kirk Street.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record again, Tom Lean of Connell Foley. This is an extension for a project that did receive deviation. So notice was provided. If counsel could just confirm, they received my affidavit.
Thank you. I am and receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the one-year extension for one sixty-seven, one sixty-nine Baldwin Avenue for four to four eight New Kirk Street. Here in the city, all appears to be in order. You can go ahead and mark those as a one for the record.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel. Very briefly, this is the second extension request for this project. Just give you a short summary of it. It was a twelve-story building that was approved by the planning board back in the summer of twenty eighteen. It contains a hundred and forty units, fourteen parking spaces and ground floor retail. Minor deviations were provided for the distance for the upper floors from the right of way as well as the height of the ceiling at the ground floor level. This is really just, I don't want to use the phrase again, so I'll just say it's keeping up our pants. We're just making sure that we can continue the approval because we're probably coming back to the board with a new project as my client has obtained a neighboring project. But there is no assurance that 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 approval will be granted. Were it not to be, they would move forward with this proposal. Obviously, COVID has helped things up as well. So hopefully, this is just us coming back for this second extension and we shouldn't need another.
All right, thank you, Counsel. Anybody, any questions? I'm sorry, did somebody have a question?
No.
Okay, all right. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
This is your signal public, I move to close the public.
I second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Tim, do you have anything you want to add besides the deviations will be carried forward?
I have no comment. Planning's in there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two one dash zero seven four is presented to the board tonight.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
David.
Muted.
He's sleeping.
Oh, David.
His microwave's off.
You're still muted there, Mr. Cruz.
Hi, I kept to say, hi, hi.
I could hear you down the block, David.
Commissioner Horton.
Hi.
Chairman Langston.
Hi.
All in favor, motion passes.
All right.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Counsel. All right, it's nine oh two. Let's take a five-minute break, everybody. We'll come back on at nine oh seven. Okay, could we come to order again, everybody?
It's just me, Chairman.
That's it, huh?
Is this the last case, Chairman?
Uh, it might be. I don't know. We'll see how time goes. Apparently, the sun's still out in Monmouth County there, Mr. Pepe.
Always.
All right, so let's call, uh, item eighteen is case P two one dash zero four zero is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for two twenty-seven Coal Street and three ten twelfth Street.
Good evening, Chairman Langston, Commissioners. Thank you for entertaining us this evening. Um, I don't know if you have Mohammed Akil promoted as well, Matt? Uh, but otherwise, my crew is here. Um, so, uh, my name is Don Pepe from Sprint C Hollenbeck on behalf of the applicant, Harmony Foundation of New Jersey, Inc. They are a state-licensed medical marijuana dispensary. And we are seeking to fit out a tenant space on Coal Street, two twenty-seven Coal Street. The, uh, the property is located in the medium-rise district of the Jersey Avenue Park redevelopment plan. And we need, we are requesting two deviations and one waiver. Uh, one deviation with respect to the green area ratio and one deviation with respect to the size of the loading spaces. And then the, uh, waivers with respect to street tree placement. Um, I do have four witnesses this evening. I'll try and make this as quickly, uh, go through this as quickly as possible. Um, I would like to, uh, introduce Gabrielle, uh, as, as our civil engineer to show you where the property is located and get you some of the background.
Mr. Pepe, I am in receipt of your affidavit of publication, proof of mailing with respect to this application. I've had the opportunity to review it. All does appear to be in order. So we're going to mark that as a one for the record.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel.
Hi Gabrielle, I'm going to spur you in, all right? Could you raise your hand? Do you spare any testimony? You give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, can you state and spell your name, please?
Sure. My name is Gabrielle Gornelli. G A B R I E L L E. Gornelli, G O R N E L L I.
Thank you.
Ms. Gornelli, I believe we've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you. Um, so I'll share my screen. Um. Okay, you can see my screen, everybody?
Can, yes.
Okay, so, um, as, as Don introduced the project, um, we're here for a preliminary, final, um, site plan for two two seven and three ten, two two seven Coal Street and three ten, uh, twelfth Street. Our site, it's, um, block seven zeros or one lots one and two. Um, we have a portion of both of these lots, which, which I'll explain what areas we have. Um, the site is bounded by thirteenth Street to the north and Coles to the east, um, twelfth Street and the highway overpass to our south and Monmouth Street to our west. Um, the portions of the site that we'll be using are the building in the southern portion of lot one and a portion of the parking lot on lot two, um, along twelfth and, um, Coles. Um, as Don mentioned, we, we are in the medium-rise district of the Jersey Avenue Park redevelopment plan. We are generally complying with the redevelopment plan with a few minor deviations. Um, one for our loading berth, uh, space for the dimensions of it and one for the green area ratio, um, with some minor landscape, um, waivers for the street trees, which I'll get into a little bit more. Um, the site is primarily, I'll flip to the site plan. The, the project is primarily a tenant fit out in an existing building. So the building is to remain. Uh, we have a portion of the building. Um, with, with some site improvements that I'll, I'll be talking about, whereas the architect will get into, uh, the building itself and the tenant fit out. So the, the building is on the corner, as I mentioned, of twelfth and Coles. The remainder of lot two, um, is an existing parking lot that is not controlled by our tenant. So we won't be using that parking lot. Um, where we are parking is a portion of the parking lot on lot one. Um, which is an existing parking lot that, that we're taking, we're restriping it. Um, we are repaving it to the extent that it's needed. Um, we are adding some planters with some trees on the site. We have our, our loading space. Um, we are adding some ADA parking spaces. Um, with an ADA access route from our ADA spaces to our ADA entrance on the site. Um, we are utilizing the existing curb cut. That's, that's, goes to twelfth Street. Um, moving to the east down twelfth, uh, the architect will touch on some of our building mounted lights. Um, because of the highway overpass here, um, streetlights aren't really feasible. So, so we're achieving the, the light requirements with some building mounted lights. Um, we are going to redo the ADA ramp at our corner here, um, add some bike racks to the site, and we are going to install some street trees along Coal Street and then around the back of our property, um, on thirteenth Street here. Um. Mo- moving on to the, the grading and drainage plan, we, we don't typically get into this too much at the hearing, but I just wanted to mention that we did review kind of the existing topography to ensure that existing drainage patterns that exist, you know, will continue to, to drain and, and no changes were needed. We are doing.
Connected.
Um, we do have some grading changes in this corner of the parking lot, as I mentioned, for that ADA route to get from the ADA parking spaces to the ADA entry. And we are redoing, as I mentioned, the, um, ADA curb ramp on the corner to, to comply and be ADA compliant. Um, and then flipping to the landscape plan, which I, I briefly touched on, but we are installing, um, ten street trees here, and we are also installing some trees on our site. Um, I believe it's twelve, um, twelve on our site. Um, the landscape waivers that we, we need from the forestry standards, we don't meet the minimum distance requirement from, um, a utility pole. We, we opted to, you know, we thought a, some, an additional tree would be beneficial, which is, I believe, a waiver that's typically granted. Um, and then we have another waiver, also minimum distance between trees, um, twenty to thirty feet. Because we don't, this parking lot, which is not a control of, of our tenant, is an existing parking lot with an entrance here. So we don't meet that requirement, um, along, um, Coal Street. The green area ratio, which I mentioned, we do have, um, a deviation from. The green area ratio, as it's written, is based on your entire site area. Um, so our, our plan here shows us complying for the portion of the site that we control. Um, the required green area ratio is point two five. We do have a point two six when we consider only the lot area that, that our tenant will be utilizing. Um, when we consider the entire lot area, we do not comply, which is why we're requesting that variance. And that is the end of my testimony here. I just have some detail sheets, um, on the rest of my set.
Gabrielle, uh, we received a couple of review letters from Jersey City Planning and from the engineering department. Um, can I just go through a couple of those requests with you and some of the items that we're willing to do and, and have a discussion about some of the items that are problematic?
Sure.
Um, so, uh, I believe the planning review letter provided by, uh, Mr. Ward asked us to replace some dead and missing street trees further down twelfth Street, uh, thirteenth Street.
Yes.
I believe there was a total of three there, and I just wanted to put on the record, the applicant is willing to do that. We were also asked to repair some of the sidewalk areas, as indicated in a map provided by Mr. Ward. We are willing to repair the sidewalk areas. We were asked to do an ADA accessible ramp on the corner of, uh, thirteenth, and I think both Coles and Monmouth, we are willing to do that as well. There was an issue raised with respect to the drainage in the parking lot. What happens if it doesn't work? Um, I mean, our calculations indicate that it will, but if it doesn't work, it's certainly in the applicant's best interest to take whatever measures are necessary to make sure that there is no ponding on the site. Uh, similarly, in engineering's review letter, it was indicated that there's a potential ponding situation in that area of the plant. We've identified a couple of issues that might resolve that short of, uh, installing an additional inlet drain. Uh, one of the issues is there's a, there's a, uh, a drainage pipe for the overpass that's disconnected, and we're going to work with the state to get that, uh, reconnected, which will alleviate some of the water that enters that area. But more critically, uh, we believe that by adjusting the, well, correct me if I'm wrong, we believe that by adjusting the braids, we can, we can rectify that situation by having the drain to the nearest existing drain.
Correct, yeah.
High point on the corner, right, 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 David?
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay. Uh, so rather than doing a new inlet, we would like the opportunity to address that through that measure. Now, the engineering review letter asked us to replace all of the curb and sidewalk along Coal Street and along twelfth Street. Gabby, had you done a review of the condition of the sidewalk on twelfth Street?
We did. We took, we walked the site, and I apologize, I don't have any photos, but the, the sidewalk here and the curb appeared to be in, in very, very good condition and appeared to be fairly new. Um, so we did not believe it was required or should be required to replace the curb and sidewalk in this area. Um, but we certainly would be willing to walk the site and, and figure out what areas are in need of repair. We are showing an area here in need of repair, and as Don mentions, there was an area that Matt, Matt Ward brought up to, of, in concern on this corner over here that was in need of repair that I believe we're willing to fix.
So rather than just a blanket requirement, and again, this is a tenant fit out, so it's a little difficult. We don't actually control all of the areas of the property. We will do a survey and we will repair broken curb and sidewalk. Through twelve, what, that's a statement, through twelfth Coles and thirteenth Street. I think that the last issue was with respect to razor wire on the Suez Lot, which is to the north of the plan area. Um, that razor wire was installed by Suez. The landlord would be willing to address it, but the landlord doesn't have control over that. Uh, we have no access to take down that razor wire. We will be willing to do it, and we'll continue to seek access, but we've been denied so far. Thank you, Gabby. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody, any questions, Ms. Gornelli?
Yes, I have a question. This is Commissioner Torres. You mentioned the, um, runoff water on the parking lot and tie drain into a sewers, um, and you noticed a overpass line that was disconnected. But the overpass lines, they, in that area, they don't tie into a sewer. They, don't they indirectly just go onto the ground anyway?
Correct. So, so we, um, Leishwan raised a comment about ponding at the corner of twelfth and Coles and, and asked that we come to a solution to deal with that ponding. We did notice that there's a pipe on the highway overpass that, that's broken, and, and the pipe, which should be connected, and I, I apologize, I don't have a photo, um, is just pouring out onto the, to twelfth Street rather than being tied into the drainage system as it's supposed to be.
But that's my que-
Yeah.
Question, is, or is it indirectly draining onto the ground of lot? So if it's, if it got reconnected, it's still going to drain onto the ground, which one?
We, we would, we would have to analyze and see where it's supposed to go, um, and, and work with engineering to, to come with a solution. Um, we don't think that's all of the drainage issue on twelfth. We, we agree with Leishwan that there is a, a ponding happening in this corner. Um, but we think that will help alleviate some of it, and then we'll see what else needs to be done.
Um, I guess the bottom line is, Commissioner, we are committed to rectifying the ponding situation. We just believe that there are ways to accomplish that goal without installing a new inlet there, and, uh.
Yes, yes. If they could indirectly drain it to another cat spacing or something, that would help you out a lot.
Correct.
And, uh, if it, if it's, gets tied in, it goes further down the line, then that will help you out too. I'm just wondering, when you made the comment that most overpass directly drain to the ground anyway, they don't tie into something, so. Um, but if they could be changed to a different cat spacing or down, you know, from this corner, that would help you out there with what you're trying, trying to resolve. That's all I have.
So, I, I just wanted to clarify. I think the comment from the engineering letter was that to construct new curb and sidewalk along Coal Street and thirteenth Street, not twelfth Street, which I agree is in good shape. Um, and I think her main concern is curb heights in some areas where the bottom of curb and top of curb are more than six inches.
Yeah, the engineering memo does say, uh, Coles and thirteenth.
Oh, it does. Oh, my apologies.
Not, not twelfth, yeah.
Yeah, so Co- Coles, I believe, was also in fairly good shape. Um, there are portions where where the parking lot entrance is here. Um, in front of our site, it's, it's close to six inches. It, it's not exactly, but, but again, I think we're willing, and Don, correct me if I'm wrong, we're willing to walk the site and, and identify the areas that are in need of repair, but we, we felt that Coles was also in fairly good shape.
Correct. We are, we are willing to identify the areas that are in need of repair. Correct. We are, we are willing to identify the areas that are in need of repair and, in fact, then repair them. Part of the difficulty is, again, Suez uses this as a stockpile depot. And I presume there's some heavy equipment going on there. There's a, there's a giant bulkhead that's out adjacent to the sidewalk there that would be prohibitively expensive to remove. And if it's helpful to the commissioners, you know, we do have an intention to acquire that lot when it becomes available in the future. And obviously, we would, you know, we we would come back to this board for a site plan approval for utilization of that lot. At that time, you would receive no argument that we'd be willing to replace all the curb and sidewalk adjacent to that lot.
Okay. Matt, as far as Cole Street goes, I know there's a number of improvements going on there. Is the section in front of this property finished or is that still underway?
No, the improvements are north of of Thirteenth Street.
Okay. Okay, so there's no raising of the the street level there or anything like that?
Just no, no, the the overpasses actually kind of impede that from happening in this particular area.
Okay, understood. So those curb heights will never change essentially?
I mean, the curb heights, if they're reconstructed, could change. I think the the engineering comment is born from, you know, having a standard that's throughout the city, six inches, but also in the instance where there is curb parking, that when that the door clears the curb.
Sure. Okay, understood. Yeah, I have nothing else from Ms. Cornelli. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Gabrielle, one other point before we leave. One of the questions in Matt Ward's review memo was to indicate that this property is outside of any prohibited areas with respect to medical marijuana dispensaries. Did you review a letter from City Engineering confirming that?
Yes, we did get a letter from City Engineering confirming that.
I I have no further questions. I think we can turn to Ms. Hanson, Greta Hanson, project architect.
Hi, Greta. I'm just gonna spray you in if you raise your right hand. You swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I can't hear.
Oh, no, nothing.
Oh, nothing.
Maybe a phone call in.
I I've been on Zoom calls with her all week, so.
Just playing tricks on people, Don. All right. Thank you, Greta. Can you just press star nine to raise your hand? I see two phone numbers. Okay. All right, can you, are you, you should be able to talk now?
Star six.
Oh, yeah, star six to unmute. All right, it looks like, yes.
Greta, you're going to have to mute your Zoom now, or you're going to get a feedback.
Yeah, I have the Zoom muted. I think I got it.
All right, you sound, you sound great. And just confirm that you said yes when I saw you in.
I did say yes.
All right, thank you. And if you could state and spell your name, please?
My name is Greta Hanson. That's H A N F E N.
Greta, I don't believe you've ever testified before this board. So can you share your credentials with the commissioners?
Yes, I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, also New York, where my office is based. I've been working in the practice for fifteen years. I have degrees in architecture from Columbia University, University of Cincinnati, and I teach at Pratt Institute in design currently.
And your New Jersey license is current?
It is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you, Chairman. So Greta, why don't you show us the architectural design?
Great, well, too. Actually, we thought first it might be helpful to, and if somebody could confirm, you can see my screen. Great, just to look at some background visuals on Harmony's aesthetic in general. I'll go quickly through everything. This is Harmony Dispensary's current location.
Yeah, we we do counsel.
Let's make it one set, A two.
Twenty-four pages. Thank you.
I think it's five pages.
Yeah, it's it's only the photos that aren't part of the submission.
Thanks.
Yeah, I I'll I'll mark all the pages A two. Thank you. So as I was saying, this is Harmony's existing dispensary location, it's the Caucus New Jersey, which they opened in two thousand and eight. And to go through, this is another planned location in Hoboken. We've been working on with Harmony, an interior view of that dispensary, an exterior view of a proposed courtyard entry. And here, a planned expansion of their production facility in Lafayette, New Jersey, and an interior rendering of the lobby space there. And here, of course, the site at two two seven Coles, this photo was taken in two thousand and twenty. Since that time, Harmony Dispensary has engaged with the Jersey City Mural Arts Program and Man of Public Art to sponsor the Jersey City Mural Festival, which just happened a few months ago. And also committed a lot of time and passion and energy into the artist collection as they're interested in, you know, promoting the arts in Jersey City in general. And so the the current facade looks like this at the moment. This is a mural by the artist J. Six Fernandez. And just to show you the murals on the all the facades of two two seven Cole Street, this is the view under the overpass at Twelfth Street before above, and of course, current at the bottom by the artist Eric Carbling. And this is a photo also taken in two thousand and twenty of the the view from the parking lot. Your Monmouth is at your back. And the current view with a mural by the artist Max Samson. Gabby already took us through the site location, so I'll skip this. This is the the site plan. I also know that Charles from Drosner Robbins plans to go further into the site improvement. So I'm going to focus on the tenant fit out and just touch on just two aspects on the exterior, one being proposed signage on Cole Street at the corner. Externally lit black metal lettering, about two and a half feet in height, as well as the exterior lighting upgrade that Gabby mentioned. We're proposing the addition of exterior sconces placed along Coles and Twelfth Street. In addition to pole-mounted lighting at the parking lot, one exterior pendant at the entry.
Greta, based on your analysis, are we meeting the minimum lighting requirements required by Jersey City Code?
Yes, we've received comments from engineering locating two areas where there was not a continuous one one-foot candle, but by adding a sconce at the corner here and readjusting the locations of sconces along Twelfth Street, we we do meet those requirements.
Thank you.
Here's the plan, the ground floor plan. Harmony is proposing to utilize the existing main entry to the building, which is located at that corner of Twelfth Street and Coles. There is an existing curved storefront glass that leads you into a large vestibule, which also doubles the check-in for the facility. When visitors are checked in here at this desk, they can enter the main area for product display for Harmony. This is where you view the products and, if you're a newcomer, learn more about Harmony's line of products. There is a consultation lounge here of the south and two eighty-eight bathrooms, one for visitors and one for staff. Adjacent to that space is a room for primarily ordering with staff guidance or on iPads and a main pickup counter located here. These two doors serve as exits leading you through. There's an online pickup counter here, and that leads you to the primary exit, which also serves as the ADA entrance for introducing a ramp into the facility there. Loading located here, service entry through the back, back-of-house storage room, although the primary back-of-house is located within this rectangle where product is stored securely. On the second floor, what's proposed is flexible use space, primarily possible educational programming, staff training, a multipurpose space in essence. There's some additional storage area here as well. And the 3D view also, you know, shows you that circulation sequence that I went through on the first floor. And we also thought it'd be helpful to bring an interior view of the main display area, which shows the lighting installation above you, some curvilinear design elements, but generally a minimal aesthetic, which we think resonates well with Harmony's brand.
Thank you, Greta. One question for you, typically only card-licensed patients enter the facility or or their caregivers?
Yes, absolutely. And and that and that checking process happens again right here at the entry of vestibule.
Thank you. I I have no further questions.
Um, yeah, I really have no questions. Anybody else, anything?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to, I'd like to bring on Mohamed Akil, just to talk very, very briefly about the TV outreach that we've engaged.
I'm Mohamed. I'm just gonna spray you in if you can raise your right hand. You swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yeah, Mohamed, M U H A M M E D, Akil, A K I L.
Thank you.
Mr. Akil, we're having a little trouble hearing you.
Set up a little bit more. I'll speak a little bit louder. How is this, Chairman?
Little better.
Okay, I'll make sure I speak loudly.
Okay, thank you. And we're not qualifying you as a an expert tonight. You're just a fact witness, correct?
Correct, Chairman.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
So I really won't be long because I know you all, you know, have a long agenda. And I just want to start first by thanking all of you as commissioners, the work that you do as a planning board members, moving the moving the city forward. I know it's thankless. I want to definitely thank you, Chairman, for your leadership. And I find, and I also want to thank, you know, the endless work that happens, you know, at the senior level of the HEDC Department with the city, Matt Ward being one of the senior leaders. Just want to again start by thanking you for the countless hours of work that you all do. I only want to make mention really quickly of two letters of support that are included in the application. The first letter of support, I think, is shared with you on the screen right now, if I'm correct?
I think Ashley's doing so right now. Correct.
Okay, so this first letter is, Ashley, if you can just maybe go to a hundred percent or seventy-five percent, so we can see the entire letter, not that I'm going to read it line by line. I just want to make mention that the first letter is from the Jersey Avenue Park Neighborhood Association President Jeff Carroll, in which they indicate that they have no issues or questions with the proposed site plan application. And in our conversations with them, they also indicated that they are very supportive of Jersey City's first medical cannabis dispensary being in Jersey City and in the neighborhood in which residents and the members of the association are 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 a part of. Just for, just so that you know, that we're actually speaking about residents in the in the cast iron lofts, the cast iron lofts building, as well as Soho West. The second letter I want to make reference is a letter from, is a letter from Taishida Matthews, who is president of the Holland Gardens Resident Council. As many of you know, Holland Gardens is one of the low-income, affordable housing complexes in Jersey City. Ms. Matthews was briefed in detail on the site plan application for two two seven Cole Street, the Harmony Dispensary, obviously, the Harmony Dispensary. She also, she also took the time out to take a tour, an educational tour of the Seacaucus Dispensary and Grow House. Just really trying to get a better understanding of what a medicinal dispensary should look like. And also, even though this is not pertinent to the Jersey City location, but also what what the Seacaucus Grow House, what it looks like and how it's run. Also, it's important to make mention that Ms. Matthews, as she mentions in this letter, was very and is very impressed with the social equity component, the social equity culture that is within the Harmony organization. As you all know, the social equity component inside the cannabis industry or speaks to how communities of color have been drastically negatively impacted by the failed war on drugs. Inside the letter, you'll, when you get an opportunity to take a look at it, you'll see that she speaks to her desire and and the and Harmony has complied with harm with, again, her desire to do job, job fairs specifically for the residents of 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 Holland Gardens for employment opportunities within within the Harmony Dispensary right there at two two seven Coles, which is really only four blocks away. The 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 senior own, the ownership and senior management of Harmony understands the significance of the failed war on drugs and also understands that communities of colors or of color were hardest hit by the failed war on drugs. Finally, I just want to just quickly make mention or accentuate what the architect Greta Hanson has has already spoken with you about. And that is the the murals on the building. And it's not simply about the murals on the building. I want to make like accentuate that Harmony was one of, is already doing community reinvestment in Jersey City, even before they opened up shop. They came on board as a prime, as a prime sponsor of the first annual Jersey City Mural Arts Festival, along with Man of Contemporary and the City of Jersey City, a very successful first annual event. Not only that were murals put on the actual, on the two two seven Cole Street property, but there are, if if any of you have driven through that area, there are murals really in that. It's more than one square block. There are many murals that are now are now accentuating, improving the quality of life with with art in that neighborhood. As you all know, that area has been an area that has been in a heavy industrial area, blighted to a great degree. And Harmony is committed to being a part of the transformation of that area into and into a space that Jersey City can be proud of and that they have also made the commitment of making the two two seven Harmony, the two two seven Cole Street property, you know, a site that the City of Jersey City, through the Division of Cultural Affairs- you know, a site that the City of Jersey City, through the Division of Cultural Affairs, Office of Cultural Affairs, can come back to on a regular basis whenever they want to do any kind of programming for the city. So those are Counselor Pepe, those are the points that I wanted to make mention of, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Appreciate it. I have no further questions.
Um, anybody, any questions, Mr. Akil? Okay, thanks, sir. We appreciate the kind words, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my last witness is Charles Height.
And Charles, if you could just confirm that you're still under oath?
Yes, I am under oath.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, I'll, I'll just jump into it. We were very responsive with this application. Several months ago, we met onsite with Matt Ward to discuss what our alternatives were, given the existing constraints on the site. So we did make a strong effort as, as to trying to include as much site improvement as we could, given that we're really originally started as an existing internal renovation for a tenant fit out. But given, given the sensitive use, you know, we thought we were trying to be good neighbors and doing as much as possible in a responsive way. We are requesting three elements of relief here, two deviations, one design waiver. I'll walk through them. I did quickly want to share my screen just to hone in on a couple of these aspects. Everyone can see this, this is sheet C301, the landscaping plan prepared by President Robin. The loading space, based on standards, loading spaces are required to be forty feet deep and ten feet wide. The space that we're proposing to occupy for our loading is fifteen feet wide, so that complies. But we are only providing a twenty-four foot depth. We've chosen this location for loading because it is right outside the service entrance, as Ms. Hansen had mentioned. So it's, it's the most approximate route to load and unload. Based on the vehicles, vans and other trucks that will be locating in this, used by this operator. This is appropriate sized space, so it's, it's also a space where this, this vehicle and truck parking in the loading zone can navigate out of. There's twenty-four foot wide drive aisle, and obviously the goal is to have a front-in, front-out access through the existing curb cuts. So that's, that's the request there with the space. It's adequately sized at the end of the day with what, what trucks will be located here for trucks and vans. The, probably the more critical aspect, given that this property is in the flood zone, the green area ratio requirements do come into play. As was mentioned by Ms. Cornelli, the existing portion of the overall site is approximately eighteen thousand square feet of disturbed area that we're proposing, including the building and the land. So we're trying to factor that into what we could reasonably accomplish in this portion of the site. The actual deviation or variance in this case, because it's with respect to the general land development ordinance, is on our zoning table. It's, it's right here. The requirement, excuse me. Requirement for green area ratio is, as mentioned, point two five. When it's calculated, as per the zoning ordinance, our calculation is point one one. So that's the relief being sought. And typically, this board doesn't budge on this type of relief. But I think in this instance, I would offer to this board, we have two elements of relief here. One being a physical hardship and two being benefit outweighing the detriment. So just to reiterate this, so, so everyone's fully aware of how we're connecting this. The, again, this is C301. The primary structure and space that we're occupying is in this lower southwest, southeast portion of the property. Lot two has the existing parking area and trailers in the north of it. This area that's highlighted with this ribbon is inaccessible to this tenant. It's occupied by utility, for their water utility in the area. So we really have had limited time in trying to pose any sort of improvements within the space. And as a planner, I imagine when utility is complete with the work in the area and this property comes online, that, you know, there's more flexibility in accomplishing the point two five. Also equally, we were requested to provide off-free parking. So we looked to the adjacent property where we thought we might have some opportunity to provide that parking. This is a vacant structure on lot one. You can see the area in the ribbon. This is all vacant. It's restricted access. And there'd have to be substantial work done on this building to reoccupy it. So this parking lot is basically an underutilized parking area. We are proposing to restrike and improve the area with both, both trees and landscaping. So this does two things, just to be technical. It does decrease the impervious coverage on this lot. And it also meets the intent of the green area ratio, you know, to provide for other elements that help stormwater retention and, and remove the flow of volume to the stormwater system, the combined stormwater system. So that's our proposal. I did just want to generally note that we are doing a number of other things on the site, as was covered earlier in the presentation. I do want to also call out specifically the proposed bicycle spaces. So as a commercial use, retail use, we are required to provide for eleven spaces. We are providing twelve and there, there are sets of two, so they're located along Cole Street, and I'm calling them out here on the plan. The benefit of locating them here, obviously, it's directly adjacent to the proposed use tonight, but there is also a dedicated bike lane planned for Cole Street, so that, that's a nice connection here. The last design waiver, I think, was covered pretty well. It's, it's two components here. We called them out. It's proximity to infrastructure and the, the minimum distance between two street trees. It's, it amounts to a hardship. We typically don't ask for relief on locating street trees near infrastructure because there does sometimes present some conflicts there with light poles and utility and whatnot. But here we did coordinate with the forester and city planning, and in this case, this proximity is appropriate. So in total, there, there were ten street trees proposed that wrapped this frontage here. And three additional street trees will be added to replace dead streets, dead trees along 13th Street. Those are the, that, that's the relief being sought in terms of, of the, the three components here. In terms of justifying these use variances, I think I covered some of the positive criteria, but I do think they also advance purposes of land use law. One, to guide the appropriate use and development of land in the state of New Jersey. We do have a sensitive use, an alternate treatment center, marijuana distribution or dispensary. And I can say that I've, I've worked on applications in the state with this current license holder. And, and they have fully complied with all state requirements regulating this type of, of use under the law. So with respect to inappropriate use for the area, I think it certainly is. This use provides relief for those who need it, those who need it. In terms of purpose, I to promote the desirable visual environment, we've coordinated, we, we actually were very excited to coordinate, as Mr. Akil mentioned, with the mural program. And, and that having kicked off within a good timing of this project coming online. We have really nice murals that are already there. It's a shame, the, the, the street trees will actually block the, the one mural on Cole Street, but it, you'll still be able to see it when you're walking along Cole. The, we do have other modest improvements with the lighting, building mounting lighting and the signage as well. I will also tie in that we're making substantial repairs to the sidewalk. So just from a, a raw aesthetics in the area, tho, those improvements will, will help with the environment. Lastly, conservation of energy resources and natural resources. We are reusing, rehabilitating an existing structure and space. So that's always a goal in planning, that's purpose J. It's also a goal of, of the mid-rise district. I'll reference that here quickly. To provide a range of development activities which shall encourage uses to those which currently exist in the area through the encouragement of compatible building design, new construction and rehabilitation in this district. Shall respect, reinforce and preserve existing characteristics and east and west views. So it goes on from there, but I think we're meeting that intent with this district to permit a commercial use and we're preserving and rehabilitating the space. I'll shift gears to the negative criteria. I think all these details have been covered. With respect to general welfare, we're making substantial upgrades to ADA access. Also, on the building for patrons, also in the area for the public with the ramps. We, as I mentioned, are substantially improving streetscape standards above and beyond, which typically require, which is really only improvements within the right-of-way frontage of your property. Here, we're, we're wrapping the whole street and then some. And lastly, a component with the green area ratio, we, we were careful to, to look at grades within the parking lot area and also off-site, as requested by city engineering, to evaluate any improvements that can be done. And I think we've, we've been responsible in that way to, to provide for appropriate stormwater drainage. With respect to the intent and purpose of zone plan and zoning ordinance, I don't see any substantial impairment. We are really doing everything that's been asked of us. We have an appropriate use and appropriate location, and I think we're, we're actually accomplishing the goals of redevelopment. One tenant retrofit at a time. So that's, that's my complete testimony. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Charles. Just, just a couple of things I'd, I'd like to add, just, you know, while you're any questioning you. The, the, if, if this use is approved, with this area is generally under the overpass. It's, it's an untended area, if you will. And with Harmony in place, there's going to be surveillance, there's going to be presence, there's going to be substantial lighting. It'll improve the safety and security of the entire area. Would you not agree?
It, it will. Construction, activity, patrons will be walking past. This use has strict security standards under state law, so there will be added security just, just by virtue of that. So I do think it will, the presence of this use will activate and secure the area. I don't, and, and I believe we're also, we, we've identified some lighting and infrastructure underneath the ramp that we brought to the attention and are trying to mitigate as well.
Correct. Thank you. I have nothing more.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Height. Um, yeah, I have no questions for Mr. Height. Anybody else?
No.
All right, thank you.
So I think, I think I have discussed the review letters to the extent that I, I was asking for relief from the conditions set forth in there. There was just one more I'd like to bring to the board's attention. Matt Ward had asked for a condition to be placed on the record that if we change, I think, to an adult use under the newer laws that were passed, that we would come back to the board. We're agreeable to that if the city's ordinances and/or state law require it. We don't know what they are yet, so I don't want to bind us to an obligation that might not otherwise apply.
That was not a condition. That is a fact, in my opinion. It is a conditional use, and since this use is not defined right now, cannabis retailer, there's no pre-existing condition that could be possibly afforded to this project.
Yeah, and I, and I didn't want to argue with the point, but that ordinance is not yet adopted, and I don't know what it's going to say. But if it requires that we come back, we'll come back.
It's silent.
Well, no, we, we will have to meet, let, let me put a finer point on it. If, if it's a conditional use and we do not automatically meet the conditions, we'll come back.
Well, being that there's no city ordinance in place yet, wouldn't it be considered a conditional use? Or?
Oh, it's not currently permitted.
No, adult use is not currently permitted.
So as, as a retail space, this?
I'm, I'm sorry, Chairman. You know what? That was a misstatement. Adult use would be permitted, I believe, under general retail, except Jersey City is now taking action to further limit that and put some restrictions on it. And, you know, we're, we're a hundred percent in favor of that. And if the ordinance requires conditions that we don't presently satisfy, we'd be happy to come back. I just don't know. My cautionary, you know, position is I just don't know what it says when it's adopted, because it's not adopted.
I think we're gonna have to disagree, agree to disagree on the record here, but we can talk about it when, if, and when it should come.
So my position on it is it's pending legislation, and the board's going to retain jurisdiction to hear it at a later date if and when your client chooses to move forward with the retail component.
Absolutely. You know, I, I believe ninety-nine percent certainty that we're gonna have to come back to the board. Again, it hasn't been adopted. If it's somehow grandfathered, medical use facilities that were previously licensed, I don't want to put myself in a position where I've volunteered to come back when I might not otherwise. Because I don't know what the final ordinance says.
That is fair, that that is your position. And my position is we're going to reserve that jurisdiction and you may have to come back.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. The only other question I did have counsel is, we didn't talk about security. The applicant will comply with any state statute at this point, since there is no local ordinance yet?
Absolutely. The state, you know, is a highly regulated industry. There will be security guards on premises at all times. They are generally, you know, retired police officers, and they are usually armed. The cages that hold the product are DEA-approved cages, similar to what you find in a, in a pharmacy. So, so, yeah, there's extensive security.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it complied with, you know, any state laws at this point.
And that, and that same pattern, I have a question about security. You brought up, I brought up the outside security for that area or the condition that area is in. It's underneath the overpass, it's dark, it's, it's actually a lot of homeless over there in that area. So what are the hours of this going to be open? And is it the lighting that you're talking about and the safety that you're talking about? Is it going to be continuously overnight or just when the place is open and closed? Are you shutting the lights off when the place is closed, that are outside wars, those scots? Because the area itself attracts a lot of homeless in that underneath those overpasses. So wondering, what are the hours that they're keeping and outside lighting and security on the outside? Would that be twenty-four hours or would that be just only when business, when it's open for business?
Well, the, the video, I'm certain, will be, you know, the video monitoring will be engaged twenty-four hours. It's, you, you, you've, you've turned me on my head a little bit with respect to lighting because I, I've always seen the board, you know, entertain conditions that you turn off the lights at night. But I'm sure that if along 12th Street and Cole Street, if you wanted us to keep them on later into the night to provide additional safety and security to the area, the applicant would be willing.
I only, I only brought that up because it was brought up in the planner's testimony, and you brought it up that the underneath the overpass is going to improve the conditions of safety. Is what you, what was, what was said, that they're gonna Is what you, what was, what was set, that they're going to prove the conditions of safety. I want to know are those conditions going to be approved on just when the store, when the business is open? Or is it going to be a continuous daily approval of safety in that area?
Well, you know, Commissioner, the the store's hours will be 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM typically is what they are in Seacock because I don't want to commit that that would be the limitation on hours here. But, you know, 10:00 to 7:00 is where they operate in Seacock is presently. And again, if if the commission, if the, you know, if the board would like me to keep the lights on at night, I think we'd be amenable to do so.
Counsel, my understanding was the lights along 12th Street are almost treated like street lighting.
They are, they're DOT and and we'll work with them. I'm talking about the lights that we control. You know, I'd be, we will reach out to DOT, but it's completely their jurisdiction. Because they're under, I think they hang under the overpass.
Are we talking about the onsite lighting? I understand the streetlights stay on, but we're talking about the onsite illumination.
That's my understanding, Counsel.
Right. And Commissioner Torres, you're concerned obviously about general safety of the site.
Well, it was brought up by the planner that it was, it's going to prove the safety underneath the overpass. Since she brought it up, I am wondering, is it going to prove the safety of the overpass between the hours of 10:00 and 7:00? Is it going to be proved the safety of the overpass all the time? Because it is a area for the homeless to sleep in. It's a covered area.
Well, so I think no, look, I think we all would agree that lighting would be beneficial and improve the overall safety of the site and area, generally speaking. Counsel, I'm sure we could put the lighting on timers and be able to adjust based on
whatever
right?
Correct, absolutely. Certainly, it's in our best interest. And Commissioner, it is, you know, it is an imperfect solution. I didn't mean to say it was going to solve all of the problems in the area. I didn't mean to indicate that. But as compared to what the condition is now, which is two vacant buildings along 12th Street with no lighting whatsoever, I think it's going to be a substantial improvement.
I agree with you.
Is the site going to be under surveillance?
They have video surveillance.
There'll be video surveillance in the parking area at nighttime, right? It'll be on some kind of a loop and
correct.
So I would imagine that there would be the need for lighting as well. And again, to generally protect the site, it may turn out to be the type of place that somebody might want to break into or something of that nature. I would imagine that your client has considered all of these possibilities.
Absolutely, and they're successfully operating in several applications and, you know, and the the leader of this group is the president of the New Jersey Cannabis Association. So he's well-versed in all of the particularized issues that that confront this this use.
And and to be honest, again, I don't have an issue with the use, whether it's this or anything that houses something that is valuable and, you know, would cause somebody perhaps to to loiter and maybe commit a crime. So I think that you can figure out with your client. I'm assuming the proposal is to have security and lighting that's on timers and and everything else. And I'm sure you'll work that out going forward.
Counsel, I just got a text that there is 24-hour surveillance. It's actually monitored by the state.
Yeah, I thought that might be the case. So I assume that requires lighting, no?
Yeah, well, I don't think they'd be happy with a black image.
Right? I mean, so how much spillage you get under that overpass, Commissioner Torres? I I don't know.
Well, I agree. I just, it was, since it was brought up, I think I was just wondering the hours of the lighting under there and security under there because it made it sound like it was going to be longer than the operational hours and that's what I was hoping.
And it and it does sound that way.
It does sound that way now. So that's, I was just wanting to try to be clear on this since it was brought up in the comment that
legitimate concern? And and I think the answer is it's it's going to be lit and hopefully it it helps with anything that's going on in the neighborhood.
I just have one quick concern and it's only because the letter that was read from Harlan Gardens about the about the facility being there, which is, it's I I like the idea where they're going to put this facility. I'm glad it's close to Harlan Gardens there. But we have to just work the city and stuff that the people that do get jobs there understand. So I'm hoping that the owner of the facility makes it clear to that, but the circumstances are with the laws in New Jersey and Jersey City are people who live in projects associated with medical malwanna. That's, so I know it was iffy now because you're saying it's okay. And on the other side, they're saying it's not okay. This is where we're going to put them to work at and this is where they live. Yeah, we got to be careful. Even with the letter, as she mentions that, I just want them to be careful with what they're doing with our youth in those projects that might get jobs in that.
Understood. There are background, this is, this is like an ABC situation. There are background checks and all manner of other things as well for employees.
I'm not concerned about the background checks. I'm concerned about more that I'm, I'm going to give you something. You're going to be around something and then I'm going to punish you for being around it. That's more my concern. So our youth is going to, if they're going to work there and get jobs there, they need to be by the owner of the facility, of the applications and the president of Harlan Gardens. With the housing authority, the applications of people getting jobs there. I think that should be, but that's something that we are going to be addressing this more and more as time goes on anyway. So I just wanted to put that out for the record right now.
I mean, that speaks to the lounge use that, you know, we recommend to city council where, you know, this isn't legal to consume in a federal housing facility. So, you know, that's why it was pushed for to have lounges available. So hopefully that comes to fruition. Okay, anybody else, any questions? All right, Counsel, anything else from you?
I have nothing further, except my gratitude for your time.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wishes to comment, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in and you'd like to comment on this application, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Nobody from public?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Matt, do you have anything you want to add?
I'll just put on the record, the memos that Don was referencing, the one from city planning is dated August 5, 2021, and the one from engineering is dated August 2, 2021. They asked to amend the condition regarding in the engineering letter regarding Coles and 13th Street improvements. So I can work with the applicant on how to amend that condition. I think they were, they agreed to do some, a site visit and see if we could come up with an amended list or or more honed list of areas to improve, which I don't believe is any issue. In addition to that, there were the, there are eight conditions recommended in the city planning staff memo. I I can't quite remember, Don, did you, did you agree to comply with those?
Ultimately, I believe I did, Matt. Just not sure, while the razor wire was something I believe that was raised in the planning memo that I cannot address.
Okay.
Then I guess the drainage came from engineering, so.
All right, all right. So we'll work with the applicant to amend those conditions that were, if those changes are acceptable to the board and since they've been put on the record, we can move forward with that. Are there any questions for me? I don't know if I had any any more testimony to to share.
Um, I don't, I'm satisfied, Matt. Anybody else?
No.
Hey, I will entertain a motion if anybody wants to make one.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P21-040 as presented to the board tonight.
Second it. Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
All right, on a motion approved with conditions, Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez.
So, yeah, I I'm going to vote yes for this as a, you know, physician who's very familiar with the cannabis prescription program in New Jersey. I do understand that these these establishments do serve a community that need it, that needs it. Obviously, I'm voting yes, under the condition that if the usage or the permitted use changes, that we'll be back, Mr. Pepe, we'll see you back here again to, for us to grant you that that approval. So I'll vote I.
Commissioner Cruz?
I vote I.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes, I'm also going to vote in favor of this, but I do really that security in the area stays as they say it's going to stay. If we're going to make people walk through that area, there's that dedication. I vote I.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Horton?
I vote aye and I just want to put on the record that I appreciate Harmony and everyone there working with the community to involve them and make a good, good faith effort to involve them as much as possible, make sure it benefits them, and I hope that continues for the future.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
I vote aye.
And Chairman Linkston?
Yeah, I agree with Peter. I really appreciate Harmony, you know, becoming a member of the community before they even have a stake here. So I I absolutely vote aye and, you know, I look forward to them being even more involved.
Motion carries all in favor and a motion approved with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioners, have a wonderful evening.
This is groundbreaking for us, so congratulations, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, the time is now 10:18. Can we bring up Mr. Joseph and Mr. Paulino? Who do we have first? Mr. Joseph, let's go first. Counsel, I apologize. You know, our policy is no new testimony after 10:00 PM. We would respectfully like to carry you to the next meeting.
You may have to carry me. That's fine.
I'm I'm on Mr. Joseph first, Gene. But I think he's muted. I don't hear him. Yeah, I don't hear anything. Something in the wires tonight, there's something out there in the wires.
There's got to be. Ah, there you are.
I'm now, okay.
That's all right. Of course, we're willing to carry. Would that be at the August 24th? Or the September first meeting in September? I will refer to Matt. We may have a possible quorum issue on the 24th. I know there's a number of us out for that meeting, but
Yeah, we we haven't been able to confirm a quorum yet, but there's a couple more people that have not responded. So I think it's really up to you, Counsel, of the applicant.
Sure.
You want to go to the 24th?
Yeah, for purposes of the record, let's let's carry a preservation of notice to the to the next hearing, which is the August 24th, and then we'll we'll see what happens and we carry again from there. Okay, thank you. Matt, just to be clear, if we don't have quorum on the 24th?
We, they'll have to renotice.
Okay, that was my question. Perfect, thank you. All right, Mr. Joseph, thank you, enjoy your night.
Thank you, you too.
Mr. Paulino?
Yes.
Same question.
The same answer.
I love it.
I I don't have a, I don't have an objection to carrying it to the 24th with preservation of notice. It carries afterwards with the same conditions.
Okay, excellent.
We'll extend the time to act, Counsel.
Yes, certainly.
Okay, thank you, Counsel.
You're welcome.
All right, that was it. Okay, so I will entertain a motion for memorialization of resolutions, please.
Good, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to memorialize the following resolutions. I have four. First resolution is of the planning board of the City of Jersey City in the matter of the proposed amendment to the Powerhouse Arts District redevelopment plan of the City of Jersey City. Second resolution is recommending the Sixth Street embankment study 2021 area be designated as an area in need of redevelopment, a non-condemnation area without the powers of eminent domain. The third resolution is that the planning board of the City of Jersey City recommending the Sixth Street Embankment Study 2021 area, specifically Block 9804, lots one through eight, be designated as an area in need of redevelopment with the powers of eminent domain, specifically a condemnation study area. And the fourth resolution is applicant Vasant Properties LLC for preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variants, variances, story height, 165-169 and 173 Academy Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 12308, lots 12 and 13. Case number on that is P21-026. Thank you, Commissioner Torres. Chairman, I'm, and you're muted.
I am, sorry, everybody. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call for memorialization, please?
On a motion to memorialize the resolutions, Commissioner Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz? Oh, Commissioner Cruz is, has exited. Commissioner Torres? Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Horton?
Aye.
Commissioner Desai?
Aye.
And Chairman Linkston?
Aye.
Motion carries six in favor and one absent, Mr. Mr. Cruz.
Okay, thank you. Do we need executive session, anybody? I love it. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment then.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We are adjourned. I will see you in September.
Are we meeting still by Zoom in September or do we know yet?
At this point, we are. At this point, we are. We will keep you all in the loop if something changes. But yes, right now, that is the plan.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good one, guys, enjoy the rest of the summer.
Enjoy.
All right, bye, everyone, good night.
Have a good night.